Good evening, everyone. Welcome to our meeting. If I could have quiet, please? We're going to call our meeting to order. We'll have a roll call by our City Clerk Cathy Valdez.
The records show a flag that all members are present, with the exception of Councilmember Rigby.
Okay, if you'll all rise, we're going to do the Pledge of Allegiance, and it's going to be led by Deputy Mayor Franklin.
My pledge of allegiance is to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
In accordance with the Brown Act, I'd like to announce that as a result of convening simultaneous meetings, the members of the Buenos Sanitation District will receive compensation of $147.75 for the district meeting pursuant to the Buenos Sanitation District Ordinance 2006-1. The next thing is the approval of our agenda by our City Manager, Patrick Johnson.
Thank you, Mayor. There are no changes this evening.
We have two presentations this evening. Our first presentation is the recognition of incoming and outgoing members to our city boards, commissions, and committees. So I'm going to ask my fellow councilmembers to join me at the podium. Is there a trick? Oh, there we go. Okay. So let's see. First ones are the certificates of appointment. And the first one is Deborah Kramer, appointed to serve on the Planning Commission. Is Deborah here?
Yes, she's there.
Oh, there you are.[132.61][132.61][applause] There you go. Congratulations, and thank you.
Congratulations, thank you.
The next one is certificate appointment is for Don Looney, who's also appointed to serve on the Planning Commission.[151.44][151.44][applause] There's your certificate. Is Ralph Lizaraga here? Oh, there he is. And Ralph's appointed to serve on our Central Vista Business Improvement District Advisory Board. So there you go. And thank you. Thanks. Next person is DeeDee Timmons. Is she looking for you? Yeah, there she is. Okay. DeeDee's also appointed to serve on the Central Vista Business Improvement Advisory Board. Congratulations. Thank you. Is Bill De La Fuente here?
Yes.
Oh, there he is. Okay. Yay. Bill's been appointed to serve on our Community Safety Commission. The next person, Catherine Nannes.[228.42][228.42][applause] Catherine has also been appointed to serve on our Community Safety Commission. Congratulations, Catherine. It's just hipper for you. Is Brian Worley here? Brian, where is he? There he is.[247.22][247.22][applause] Congratulations, Brian. Ann Little? Is Ann Little? There she is. Come on down. Ann's been appointed to serve on the Public Arts Commission. Congratulations. There you go.
Thank you.
Is Don Lee Atahar? Is it? Did I say that right? Atahar. Congratulations. Sharon Larimer. Sharon's appointed to serve on our Senior Citizens Affairs Commission. Congratulations, Sharon. There you go. John Lundblad. John's also appointed to serve on the Senior Citizens Affairs Commission. Congratulations, John. There you go. Is Eric Flynn here? Eric? I didn't see him. Okay. So that is all of those. There's one more here. I have a certificate appreciation awarded to Carolyn Tham in recognition of its exceptional service to the community since October 2015 while serving on the Public Arts Commission in the city of Vista. Congratulations to you. Thank you.[344.30][344.30][applause] Congratulations. Thank you. Did I shake your hand? I can't remember. Does David Nelson here? I don't see David. I don't think he's here. Margaret Kuhn? Is she here? I don't see Margaret. And Eric isn't here. So, okay. So that is all of our appointees. With that, we'll move on to our next thing. And I need Chuck Crist up here. Where is Chuck? I have a letter of appreciation for Chuck. So I'm going to read this. This is important. Chuck is retiring sadly. Well, happily for him, sadly for us. "Congratulations to Director of Public Works Chuck Crist, who is retiring after exactly 27 years of dedicated public service to the city of Vista. Chuck was hired as Park Maintenance Worker 1 in the Recreation and Community Services Department in 1990. In 1993, he was promoted to Park Maintenance Worker 2, and in 1997, he was again promoted to Park Maintenance Worker 3. In 2001, Chuck was promoted to Park Supervisor. In 2006, Chuck and the entire Parks Division was transferred to the Public Works Department, and he was promoted to Public Services Operations Manager in 2010. And on June 2, 2012, Chuck was promoted to Director of Public Works. Chuck was raised in the Vista community. He's a graduate of Vista High School, Panther, and also an Aztec, holding a Bachelor of Arts degree in public administration from San Diego State University. He serves as an adjunct professor at Palomar College, where he teaches public works administration and maintains his certification as an arborist with the International Society of Arborists. Chuck and his wonderful wife Stephanie have four children, Caleb, Trevor, Destiny, and Olivia. Over the years, Chuck received numerous letters from both internal staff and the community commending him for his excellent work and customer service. In 2004, Chuck was nominated for the Mayor's Excellent in Service Award. He was nominated for Manager of the Year in 2006, 2008, and 2009, winning the honor in 2009. Chuck accomplished a great deal during his tenure with the city of Vista, including overseeing the replacement of 3,400 low-pressure sodium streetlights with more efficient LEDs to reduce our energy costs, producing an estimated $500,000 in annual savings. Yeah, Chuck also worked diligently with the staff to implement much-needed improvements in the city's many parks, including new energy-efficient tennis basketball lights at Thibodeau Park, sidewalk improvements at Bringle Terrace Park, netting replacement at Luz Duran and Vista Sports Park, picnic table replacements at Bringle Terrace, Buena Vista, and Thibodeau, fencing at Vista Sports Park, new shade sails and rubberized place surfaces for Shatter Ridge, Breeze Hill, Bringle Terrace, and Rain Tree, new gazebo and picnic structures at Bringle Terrace Park, and park restroom improvements at Luz Duran, Breeze Hill, Shatter Ridge, and Rancho Buena Vista Park. Chuck will be remembered in the organization for his integrity, his work ethic, and positive nature. Never one to take personal credit, Chuck will be the first to say that he is honored to work with a talented team of professionals in the Public Works Department, who share a steadfast commitment to providing exceptional service to the citizens of Vista, improving Vista's quality of life and being good stewards of the public resources. So the Vista City Council offers its sincere appreciation for Chuck Crist's dedication and commitment to the city of Vista, commends him for 27 years of invaluable service, and we wish him well in his retirement from the city and his future endeavors.
Well, I just wanted to say a few things because I've been accused of only being a man of few words. First of all, I'd like to say it's been a privilege working here at the city of Vista for 27 years. What an exceptional community we have. Many of you realize that. Moved here in 1978. Went to Beaumont, what was Lincoln Junior High and now Vista High School. I'm so proud to have grown up here. And I'm still growing up here, quite frankly. But we have an exceptional city and a community. The folks in the back are what we call our executive management team, and I can't tell you how honored and privileged I've been to be a part of that group. They've taught me a great deal, and I hope you realize, our community realizes how dedicated they really are to public service. Thank you all to the management team. I'd like to thank the elected officials, our council, and our mayor. It's really been a privilege working with all of you as well. Your sacrifice and your service to the community is unwavering, and we truly appreciate your support as staff. Our City Manager, Patrick Johnson. Let me take a look at this guy here real quick. There he is. I just wanted to say thank you to Patrick for his leadership. 27 years I've been here, and there's nobody in our, what we call, industry, the municipal or public sector, who I believe is more dedicated and who serves at the pleasure of the council and supports staff and powers staff and really gets it as far as what it means to be a leader. And I don't know how you do it. I think many of us are of the same mindset. But what a privilege and an honor for the last five years being a director, working underneath you. You've been a great mentor. And my family and I are so grateful to have gotten to know you. So thank you for your leadership. Darryl, Mr. Piper, we appreciate you, and you've been great to work with. And someday when I grow up, I hope to have a nice car like you.[710.38][710.38][laughter] There was a number of accomplishments that were mentioned. And what a privilege to just be a part of it. Anyone, of course, who's been sober would tell you that with any success, there's a lot of people behind the scenes that help you get there. And I'm not claiming to have enormous success. What I'm claiming to have had is a very great career, one that I'm very proud of. But it involved working with a number of very talented people and public service employees. In Public Works, that's our department. We're maintenance and operations folks. It's really not sexy, but it's gainful employment. We work on the infrastructure throughout the city from sewer, storm drains, roads, sidewalks, graffiti, you know, all the fun stuff. And we're proud to do it. We're proud to serve our community. And as I leave after 27 fantastic years, I have nothing but fond memories of the city of Vista. And again, I'm so proud to be a part of the team, and I'm honored to have had the privilege to serve this community for 27 years. Can we get a photo?
Okay, the next thing on our agenda is our consent calendar. Those are items C1 through C9. All the items on the consent calendar. I lost my agenda. The first part of my agenda is somewhere here. Ah, there we go. The recommendations on the consent calendar will be enacted in one motion unless an item is removed from the calendar. Any member of the public can remove an item by submitting a request to speak card to the Clerk's secretary. And items removed from the consent calendar will be considered immediately following the adoption of the calendar. So I don't have any speaker slips, so I would entertain a motion unless anyone wants to approve. Councilmember Franklin?
I've moved to approve the consent calendar.
Do I have a second?
I'll second it.
Okay, please cast your votes. That motion passes unanimously with Councilmember Rigby absent today. She's excused at another meeting. The next thing on our agenda will be our public hearing. And this is a public hearing to consider a general plan amendment, specific plan amendment, and zone change affecting 42 parcels on the mixed-use zone. So the public hearing is now open, and Community Development Director John Connolly is going to introduce the item.
Thank you, Mayor and council. This is a general plan amendment and zone change affecting a number of parcels. These are all currently zoned mixed-use. We started a discussion with the Planning Commission in October of last year to look at the mixed-use zone in the downtown specific plan and make some recommendations about possible changes to the zone. The council reviewed the zoning and the specific plan in January on two occasions and made some recommendations to rezone certain properties. And when we met in April, the last time to discuss was there were a few more added. So this is the culmination of that effort. It includes some general plan amendments and rezones as well as a specific plan amendment to the downtown, so I'll cover those quickly. There's five locations. Those are shown in the map here. A little hard to see in the overhead, but kind of a spread-apart area. As I mentioned, all currently zoned mixed-use, they include the Breeze Hill commercial areas at South Melrose and Breeze Hill, the Bobier-North Santa Fe commercial areas at the intersection of Bobier and North Santa Fe, the Vons Commercial Center at the intersection of South Santa Fe and Civic Center, the auto service area around Service Place off South Santa Fe, and a vacant parcel at Bobier right at the city boundary with Oceanside. So I'll cover each of them individually. This includes an aerial photo showing the sites at Breeze Hill. These are existing commercial centers that front on South Melrose and on the north and south sides of Breeze Hill. Also includes a redevelopment property in the rear of the southerly portion that will be developed as apartments, and the council directed us to rezone that back to commercial in the event that the apartment development doesn't move forward. So the general plan designation is changing from mixed-use to neighborhood commercial, which is our retail commercial designation. And the zoning would be changed from mixed-use with a density of 40 units to the acre to C1 commercial, which again is the retail zoning. The second site, at Bobier-North Santa Fe, is all of the commercial properties at the four corners, including the Walgreens, the 7-Eleven, the McDonald's, and the commercial center behind, as well as the State of Brothers Center. I'm not going to go through all the parcel numbers and addresses. You can see in the overhead here what that constitutes. Again, the change would be from mixed-use to commercial neighborhood, which is a retail designation, and from MU40 to C1. The Vons Commercial Center at the corner of Civic Center and South Santa Fe. This is the center that's bounded by Sierra Verde Drive on the north and Santa Anita Drive on the east. This would also be rezoned from mixed-use to neighborhood commercial, and it would include a general plan amendment matching that. This is in the specific plan for the downtown area, and so there's an amendment to the specific plan map, which is shown here. And you'll note down in the corner, the pink reddish area there is the Vons Center, which would have a new designation of commercial. The purple is mixed-use. At Santa Fe and Service Place, these are existing auto-oriented uses surrounding Service Place off South Santa Fe. All of these would be re-designated to commercial neighborhood from mixed-use and re-designated from a zoning designation of mixed-use at 15 units per acre to C1 commercial, again, the retail zone. And the final property is the vacant lot on the south side of Bobier at the city boundary. This is adjacent to vacant property in the city of Oceanside that's commercially zoned. This would be re-designated to a residential designation matching the neighborhood to the south and east. The general plan designation would be medium-density residential, which allows up to 10 units per acre. And the zoning would be changed to R1B, which is a single-family designation allowing unit, sorry, lot sizes of 6,000 square feet minimum. This matches the surrounding neighborhood designation. The last time we met, on April 11, we also talked about a couple of development projects that had started the process and that were caught in the changes. We made some formal changes to the zoning but agreed to grandfather those projects, and the provisions to allow for that is included in the ordinance before you this evening. The Planning Commission reviewed these changes on June 6 and recommended unanimous approval. And so the staff is recommending that the council approve these changes. And I am available for any questions. Thank you.
I have two speakers. So would you want to hear the speakers first?
I have a question.
Okay. Councilor Aguilera.
Mr. Connolly, I have a question about the Santa Fe Service Center. So that's going to be neighborhood commercial. I know one of the uses there is auto body shop, so that will be allowed to continue?
All of those existing uses were established under the C1 zone. And so they have use permits or provisions to allow for it, and so they would all be able to continue as legal-conforming uses.
Great. Thank you.
Councilmember Green.
Check, check. There we go. Hey, just so I'm clear, this is basically exactly what we went over in April and directed, right? So it came from our direction. The Planning Commission approved it, and we're just reapproving essentially what we suggested. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay, and now I'll go for the speakers. Joshua Tienda.
Good evening, councilmembers. It's fortunate not to have Councilman Amanda Rigby in here because I think her voice is needed. Because when we're talking about mixed-use zones, of course, it comes up from the demand of housing. We need house. We have a shortage. But the problem is developers want to get more bang for the, get more profit for every single parcel of land. So of course, they want to push for the most land. And of course, Councilwoman Rigby and I agree that we should be supporting the last resolutions for greater setbacks, greater parking for everybody, including the north Santa Fe. Because that area is very dense as it is. I mean, you have four corners, which is the high school. You have traffic coming from Oceanside Boulevard and traffic coming from downtown. So how are we going to justify more development in that area, the development that at least some developers want to without taking consideration the traffic impacts and the setbacks and everything? It just doesn't make sense to me. That's all I wanted to say.
Thank you. Karina Contreras.
Hello. My name is Karina Contreras, and I live close to a lot of this rezoning here. I do want to follow up with what the previous speaker was discussing. The issue of traffic. I personally have gone around to my neighborhood and have had some one-to-one conversations with my neighbors. And for example, where the Walgreens is at, that street right behind, I believe it's a private street, and then there's a vacant lot right in front of some homes. And they are having severe issues with parking there. Parking, other individuals coming and parking and not leaving them any access. So I do have a major concern with a lot of this rezoning that's going to turn into, you know, neighborhood, commercial. I don't see it in the plan how we're going to deal with the traffic issue and the lack of parking. I understand that we're trying to build, you know, near transit, but the arteries from those transit centers are just not built up. So we're going to have a situation that's going to increase where individuals just don't have access to park within a mile radius, maybe, of where they live. It's a serious concern, especially when there's not, you know, enough lighting or whatever the case might be. You know, someone comes home from work and they have to walk so far just to get to their home. If they have mobility issues, it increases that risk even more. So I do want to find out a little bit more from the council and, you know, from planning what we're going to do to mitigate this serious issue of not having enough parking for the residents that live there. Another thing that I do want to discuss is when I drive around Vista or I walk around, I see a lot of empty storefronts. So why are we building more commercial space when we can't even attract businesses for the existing spaces that we have? That's a real concern of mine, and I know it's a concern of my neighbors. You know, we see all this new development going up that is not taking into consideration the identity of that community. So I would like to see that addressed. I really would like to see us at least be able to fill what we already have built. Thank you.
Thank you. Those are all of our speakers.[1614.86][1614.86][applause] Deputy Mayor Franklin.
Well, I just thought I would make some comments to illuminate for all those present what it is that this action is actually doing. I think in at least four out of the five cases, we're essentially preserving the existing use and preventing the possibility in the future that that use would be, that an existing commercial use would be demolished and new residential would be built at the higher-density, mixed-used zone. So in terms of addressing traffic concerns, I think preserving those existing uses would be a favored outcome by those concerned about traffic. And also, by reducing projects that could potentially be built at the mixed-use zoning density, which has a lower parking standard, this also ensures that there will be slightly fewer opportunities to develop at highly-dense and low-parking-space opportunity developments. So again, I think if the concern is parking, I think we're taking a step in the right direction there. With regard to building more commercial, I don't think that this action tonight will induce the building of more commercial as I think 80% of these sites are already built out and operating as commercial. Is that right, Mr. Connolly?
All of the commercial sites are developed. That's correct.
They're all built. And I think mainly they're all being used successfully at this time for commercial. I think what we're doing, I mean, there certainly are vacancies within some of these centers. But for the benefit of the community, what we're doing is we've taken some of our core commercial and we've taken that off the table for redevelopment to residential. So that in the future, if a developer wanted or if an owner wanted to, say, end leases or let them run out and then demolish commercial and build residential, on these specific sites, that would no longer be possible. And this, of course, is very much something the council has done to respond to concerns about a specific incident where that happened and where there was a lot of discord from the community. So all of that said, this really, this measure tonight is really born directly out of input that we've received from citizens and is a measure that we've had about four or five council discussions on where we've worked together to craft a policy to address concerns that we've directly heard. So this is not a council, you know, initiative as much as it is a response to the public. So this is not a council, you know, initiative as much as it is a response to the public's concerns, and, and each piece of this addressing specific concerns that the public had, that the council agreed were legitimate and needed to be addressed. So with all that said, I would make a motion to close the public hearing, and to adopt the resolution proposed by staff.
Councilmember Green.
I just kind of like to, number one, agree with what Councilmember Franklin said. I'm glad that he kind of specified the why, of why we're doing this resolution. These are properties like the Von's Shopping Center on the corner, that were zoned mixed-use. You want us to bulldoze that and put apartments on there and retail below? No, thanks. Stater Brothers, the McDonald's State, you know, Shopping Center, the Walgreens Shopping Center you mentioned, these are all, you know, although that one is vacant, these are all already commercial centers. If we're trying to cut down on traffic, having the ability to build mixed-use properties on those particular lots, in our opinion, as a council and as citizens, was more of a detriment to our community than anything. So this was us trying to be proactive as a council, to say, hey, look, there's always this, already established commercial buildings there, let's let it be a commercial deal. The two properties that we are still allowing to be mixed-use, so that we did changeover off Bo Beir, were requested by the actual property owner that came and said, hey, there's still, this is conforming to the area, we can put properties over there, just get rid of changing your commercial zones, get rid of those mixed-use zones, make them commercial zones. So just want to be real clearly clear that this is exactly what we received feedback from the community on, and that's why we're acting on it. So, nothing to do with increasing parking or any of that. Thank you so much. So with that, I second the motion from Councilmember Franklin.
Okay. You want to say a thing? Nope. I haven't, okay. Councilmember Aguilera.
No, I just wanted to thank staff for their work on this, and getting the community input, and listening to council, of course, too. I'm especially happy that the vacant parcel got rezoned from mixed-use to back to medium-density, so that's, that's good for that, that piece of property. And just kind of as an update, one of the property owners that was here asking for, to keep the mixed-use zoning, I've noticed, as I've driven by, that they've actually cleaned up that property and done some good things, so I guess they're a new property owner, and have some intentions of maybe developing or building something there, so it's good. I think this will work in the long term, and like I said, I've already seen progress. I mean, they were on it within a week and a half, I think. So hopefully they put a, a application in, maybe, maybe not, I don't know. So, but I all support this, because I think it does meet our community needs. I think this will perhaps not reduce traffic, but will certainly keep traffic at bay by not allowing more building and growth in these properties. So, thank you.
Okay, thank you, and I just would want to say one thing to address her about the retail spaces, empty. Right now, retail, a lot of retail is struggling, because all of us shop at Amazon, not all of us, but a lot of us do, and so it really is, is, retail out there is, is struggling for tip, and it has to be, they put a store in, it can't be just a general store, it has to be something special that makes people want to come to that store for, for something. So we continue to search for businesses that want to have something special to come in those empty stores, you know, and to help the, the shopping centers that have empty spaces, but that's, that's what's kind of going on there, just so you know, that it's, it's just us, it's all over, that, all over the nation, that there's, retail is struggling, small retail like that. And another thing I just would mention on traffic, it's another thing that's kind of, goes all over, the people that ride on public transit are, is down, the numbers are down that ride that, and so a lot of people that used to ride public transit have bought cars, because cars are relatively inexpensive, you can get one, and the interest rates are real low, and so a lot of people have transferred, and the economy's good, they have jobs now, and so they're, they're, they've all, you know, people have bought cars, and they're, so that's, that's causing traffic, but not just in our communities, it's in a lot of communities. So just a couple, just a couple of little things I wanted to mention. So with that, I will call for the vote. That motion passes unanimously with Councilmember Rigby excused. Okay, so the next thing is, on our agenda is, one, we have one discussion item, and it's D1, it's medical marijuana access, and our Assistant City Manager, Ally Zimmerman, will provide the report, and I just, would like to remind all of you that everyone, that the Vista Municipal Code requires members of the public to observe order and decorum at the meeting, and to conduct themselves in a courteous manner. We're going to be courteous to you, and we appreciate if you be courteous to us, and not be clapping for every, every little thing. So if we do that, it, you know, just, it makes it hard on the speakers, and extends our meeting longer, so we appreciate that.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. As you know, this item is a follow-up from direction received from the City Council in the spring, to bring back a discussion regarding medical marijuana access and delivery in the city of Vista. So this evening, my plan is to provide you with a brief overview of the detailed agenda reports which you received. I'm not going to go into everything in detail, but we can discuss anything specific that you have. So I'll provide a brief overview of that, and at the conclusion of my presentation, I'm going to ask two additional speakers to provide brief reports as well. They're here to address topics that were requested by the council relating to this discussion item. Our first speaker will be Lisa Renati. She is a Senior Tax Policy Advisor to the State Board of Equalization Chairwoman Harky. She's going to provide information regarding taxation of marijuana. And after Ms. Renati presents, San Diego Sheriff Captain Hank Turner, he's the captain in Santee at the moment, will provide some insight regarding public safety. Captain Turner has visited the state of Colorado, and will share information and observations regarding the impacts of retail dispensaries on the communities in Colorado. So just as a brief overview, as you know, currently, the Vista Municipal Code prohibits all commercial marijuana activity. This has been the direction of the City Council to date, and has been confirmed over the past four to five years, through the City Council's action related to zoning regulations, citywide goals, and additions to staffing to address illegal uses. But I do want to clarify the distinction between what's allowed within the city of Vista, and then what is allowed at the state level, because that has always been a cause of some confusion in the community. Both personal medical and personal recreational use of marijuana are legal in California. Proposition 215, back in 1996, first legalized medical marijuana, and then in 2015, the state also enacted the California Medical Marijuana Regulation and Safety Act, and then last November of 2016, Proposition 64 legalized recreational marijuana. However, that all being said, local governments still retain the authority to prohibit the retail and commercial activities, not personal use, but the commercial and retail activities, which would include the storefronts and delivery. And because the city of Vista does have illegal dispensaries that are operating in the city, this further adds to the confusion, as many people think that if a business is operating, then it must be allowed. I wanted to speak again about the state regulations with the passage of Prop 64. The state has been working to consolidate the regulations that existed for medical with the new regulations for recreational marijuana. We just learned a few hours ago that a Senate bill, which was a budget trailer bill for the, for the state, to streamline the state's marijuana regulations, was actually signed by the governor today. This streamlining may provide guidelines the city could use, as it considers modifying our local regulations, but at this point, we have not had the opportunity to fully review or analyze this. It's about a 200-page bill, so that's something that we will be doing, is taking a close look at those regulations, and determining how they would fit into whatever direction we receive from the City Council. And then finally, I also wanted to mention that at the federal level, marijuana for any use is still considered a Schedule I drug, and it is illegal, and we have not seen any indications under the new presidential administration that there will be any changes to this categorization. I briefly did want to touch on the public safety impacts before Captain Turner speaks to you in a few minutes. What I wanted to touch on is some confusion, again, confusion in the community, because we get a lot of similar questions on two different sides of the, of the discussion. One question we get a lot about is, why is the city so lax on enforcement of dispensaries? And then the other question we get is, why is the city so severe on the enforcement of the dispensaries? So I'm going to, I'll go with, start with lax. The perception of lax enforcement relates a lot about, because there are legal steps that we must take in order to successfully legally shutter any business. Dispensaries, when we learn about them, are visited fairly quickly by our code enforcement staff, and they're notified at that time that the use is not allowed in the city. However, if the dispensary does not voluntarily shut down, we have to start a due process under the law that requires a full investigation. This would include any reconnaissance work, any undercover buys, observations of the operation, further notifications to both the business and property owner about the illegal use, requesting and obtaining search warrants, issuing cease and desist orders, and finally, if necessary, criminal prosecution. It takes a long time, but in order to meet all the constitutional requirements of law, it does take that time, and that's why sometimes, when we learn about a dispensary, people think we can shut it down right away, it's not the case, so it does take time. Then when you're speaking on the other side of the issue, the inquiries as to why, when law enforcement does do a raid of a dispensary, why there's such a heavy hand, this is primarily a security and safety issue. The dispensaries are heavily cash-based businesses, the commodity that they're selling has a high street value, the locations are protected by armed security, they typically are set up in a manner with security doors and cameras, so that you can't see what you're walking into when you approach the location, and because of these factors, the highest levels of precaution must be taken by law enforcement when a surprise visit is initiated, that, it's just one of the things they have to deal with in their line of work. I did also want to touch on the fact that in May, the City Council authorized public opinion polling on this issue. We've initiated that process, and the poll was conducted in the community earlier this month, and our consultants are working on analyzing the results. Based on the preliminary updates that this, that we have received, the poll indicates that in general, Vista voters are supportive of local access to marijuana, medical marijuana, excuse me, and to some number of medical marijuana dispensaries being allowed to operate. Voters are also generally supportive of taxation and regulation of the medical marijuana dispensaries, and are generally opposed to allowing those dispensaries to locate in any of the city's residential zones. So the agenda report for this item outlined a number of regulations that staff would recommend the City Council consider, should direction be provided to bring back municipal and development code amendments to allow for medical marijuana dispensaries and/or delivery. The recommendations that we provided are based on the staff review of other local government regulations on this industry, that are in place in order to mitigate potential building, safety, code enforcement, and law enforcement concerns. Related to the locations where dispensaries could be allowed, staff would recommend only allowing dispensaries in the city's commercial or industrial zones, subject to a 1,000-foot buffer from a sensitive use. And staff would not recommend any allowance in a residential zone, including the city's mixed-use zone, because residential allowances are within those zones. The identified sensitive uses, which are in a preliminary drafted as an exhibit to the agenda report, represent the known areas where children congregate, as well as locations where addiction-focused treatment may be occurring. We can discuss any of the specific recommended regulations further if you would desire, but because there are almost 30, I didn't feel, I wasn't going to list them all for you again. Finally, should staff desire to allow for medical marijuana testing facilities in the city, staff's recommendation would be to permit this in the industrial zone only, and this, again, would also require modifications to the development code to permit that use. So at this time, staff is requesting the City Council provide direction to the staff regarding the options that it presented, or any other options you choose to bring up at this time, and based on that direction, we'll proceed with any required information gathering, more research if required, or the preparation of the final documents, ordinances, resolutions, policies, and procedures that would be required for effective implementation. And this actually concludes my formal presentation, so at this time, if you don't have any preliminary questions, I was going to ask Lisa Renati from the Board of Equalization to join me at the table, she does have a presentation related to taxation of marijuana.
Thank you, council members and mayor. Thanks for having me here. Again, I'm Lisa Renati. I work for Diane Harky, Chairwoman of the Board of Equalization, which is the agent that see, that has, administers all taxes and fees for California. As of next week, it will be the California Department of Taxes and Fees, but it'll be the same people, doing the same thing. My presentation has been updated to include the Trailer Bill 94. So there is, I've been reading it. So there is a little bit of changes to it, not much that I'm going to talk to today. So Prop 64 was enacted for recreational use, included in that was excise taxes. Excise taxes are different than sales taxes, in that they are normally collected from the person that's going to be selling. There's a cultivation tax that is going to be on the cultivators, those are growers, that'll be $9.25 per dry weight ounce for leaves, $2.75 per ounce for, I mean, I'm sorry, $9.25 for flowers, $2.75 for leaves, that'll be when it enters the actual commercial market. There's also a retail excise tax, and this is where the change has been made, it's 15% on the average market price for all retail marijuana sales. That will be the dispensaries will be required to collect that from all of their purchasers, and remit that directly to the state. Then, on top of that, there will be sales taxes. Sales taxes will be on top of all these excise taxes. If it's for recreational use, it'll be subject to sales tax. If it's for medical use, it's not subject to tax. The excise taxes are still due, whether it's recreation or medical, but for sales taxes, no tax due on medicinal use. Now, for cities, what that means is you won't get the local tax revenue, you will only get it on your recreational sales. So how will the marijuana spent, this is, money be spent, this is the question I get all the time, we're collecting all this tax and these excise taxes, where's the money going? It's going to go into the California Marijuana Tax Fund. It's not going into the general fund, it's going into that fund. The money will be spent specifically, let me back up, for the cost of administration enforcement, research going to UC San Diego, money going to the public universities for research, some, a little bit of money to CHP, more money going to health departments and community-based nonprofits. Then the remaining monies will be going to health programs and youth programs, trying to educate people about the dangers of using marijuana. Prop 64 dues, you have to be over 21, they will not be able to sell to anyone over 21. It has to be, medical use has been loosened. Originally, in the proposition, it was very strict to get, you had to have a medical marijuana card issued by the state. That has been loosened, because I think there were some worries that if the federal government came in, and we were only letting people buy recreationally, that people would not have access to marijuana for medicinal use. So they've kind of relaxed the rules on medical marijuana, to have it with a recommendation from a physician. You can smoke marijuana in your private home or business, you can have no more than six plants per residence, that's not a resident, a lot of people think it's per person, but it's per home, and you cannot sell that marijuana that you're growing. On your person, you can have one ounce of marijuana, or eight ounces or less of concentrate. You can't, what, you can't drive, or smoke it in public, you can't, you can't have more than an ounce with you, you can't sell it near a school, or daycare, you can't market geared toward youth, I think they define that as marketing where 71.64% of the people would be adults only, so I don't know how that would work, and how it'd work, you can only have edibles which are not packaged to entice youth. So I talk about marijuana, and if you want to learn metrics once and for all, you get to learn about marijuana, because the typical size is an eighth, which is three and a half grams, you take a dollar bill, put marijuana on top of half of it, that's about an eighth, and that's about, you know, three marijuana cigarettes or so. What's an ounce? It's 28 grams, it's about four-dollar bills with marijuana all over it. So that, you can have an ounce on your person at any time. So this allows for people with medical issues to carry an ounce, or recreationally to have an ounce on your person. There are other forms of marijuana, you can educate yourself on what wax, shatter, hash oil, vaping, but these other forms are highly concentrated, and so those you would only have no more than eight ounces on your person. Marijuana-infused foods, these are before, you know, before the law comes in effect, you see they're desirable, there's pot tarts, and all these different things. These packaging is going to be adjusted, because you don't want, it's going to, for children to eat them, you don't want people to grab onto gummy bears, or whatever it may be. Some issues to consider, impaired driving, where the business location is, we've seen, we've had anecdotal evidence, because we have an audit program, who've audit, audited different stores, and they're in locations that are close to children. Whether you're going to allow delivery services versus storefront, the regulation does state that if you're going to have delivery service, you must have some type of permanent business address, you just can't drive around selling pot out of your car. Tax evasion's been a huge problem, the Board of Equalization's noticed, we have audited these stores, it's difficult to audit, one of the main reasons is the security, our auditors don't feel comfortable going inside, so we do other types of observations. Also, there's odor issues, the stores smell like pot, a lot of our employees don't choose to work there all day. We've also had problems with payment of taxes in cash, it is a Schedule I drug, there's no banking solution currently. The treasurer's office is working on it, and we work with them as well, trying to find a solution, because the Board of Equalization collects taxes, so it will all be coming in. taxes. So it will all be coming in in cash. It will also come into the cities in cash when you pay your fees. There is also outdoor cultivation issues for you to consider, that I'm sure your city managers will talk to you about. Odor issues, as I said, if you've ever walked by a grow house, you can smell it from the streets. And there is criminal activity. And it's not just, I'm not saying the marijuana dispensaries are criminal. I'm saying criminals attack the dispensaries. And just for your edification, average grow takes three to five months. It goes from seed, seedling, vegetative, flowering, and harvest. It's a weed. It grows fast. They probably called it weed. So it grows very fast. It's an intensive process. If you don't know what you're doing, you could harm the public. That's why testing facilities are going to be required. There's a six-plant rule. This is two plants. This is in someone's house. So plants can get very tall. There are some that are 12 feet tall in backyards. It's up to you for your city to decide what you're going to allow, but they do have to be locked up. I think the rule does say, you just can't have this big grow in your backyard. Here's an indoor grow facility in Desert Hot Springs. You can see the guys reaching up to reach them. Desert Hot Springs has been a city that has allowed large indoor grows. And that concludes my presentation. I'm available for any questions that you may have, now or later.
So Mayor, if you would like to take questions now, it's fine. Otherwise, we'll have, we'll go ahead and take, Councilmember Green.
I just had a question for you with the place you said that grows, you know, has the indoor grow. I'm assuming that's for medical as well, correct?
It's for both, medical and recreational use.
Okay, so they receive tax revenue from that in some way, I would assume?
There would not be, there's an excise tax when it goes in, it would be due when it goes into the market. So while it's growing, there would be none, but once they, the track and trace program that's going to be enacted as of January 1st will track and trace from seed all the way to sell. So as, once the marijuana goes into the market, it'll be, the excise tax will be due on the leaves and the flowers.
And all the stipulations you were speaking of are on the recreational per Prop 64, correct?
Prop 64 does talk about medical and recreational.
Oh, it does. Okay. And there's no, so what I was kind of getting from you is that there's no way for a city to receive currently tax on a medical marijuana dispensary?
Not under the current state law, no.
Okay, thank you.
Deputy Mayor Franklin?
Just a little further into that taxation issue. So any of the retail taxes that are imposed, so the city would be entitled to receive its share of, of sales tax on, that's imposed under the law.
Correct.
On recreational, but then, under current law and the laws it's going to be after January 1, any medical marijuana would not be subject to the sales tax?
Currently, medical marijuana is subject to sales tax. So right now, you are receiving revenue from medical marijuana sales as of January 1st. Well, I take that back. We, the Board of Equalization, the minute the law passed, they told everybody, it's no longer taxable for medicinal use as long as you meet the regulation. And Prop 64 had that very stringent medical marijuana card. So there are some people that were exempting medical marijuana sales because they had the state-issued card. There was only about 6,000 in all of state California issued, so the majority of medical marijuana sales have been taxable up till now. As of January 1st, they'll be completely exempt.
Okay, so the city will not have a way to impose a sales tax on medical marijuana after January 1st?
The current sales and use tax is not taxable, is not, does not apply to medical marijuana sales.
Right.
So there, I-
What I'm trying to get at is, any person who obtains a medical marijuana card will be exempt from paying a sales tax?
The California sales tax, yes.
Right. Okay. So, and it, I'm not very expert in this, but would you say it's rather easy to obtain a medical marijuana card?
Yes.
So then, it's likely that most people will choose, if they have an option, not to pay the tax. Most people, I'm guessing, would probably choose to pay a lower price for the same good if they could, right?
Well, it depends. I have researched Colorado, and in the beginning, when Colorado legalized marijuana, they went from 1,000 medical marijuana permits to 108,000 medical marijuana permits in the same year. But then now, if you look later, now it's kind of evened out, so more people are buying recreationally. And I'm not sure if that permit went, number went up because a lot of people were scared to buy medical marijuana before, and then once it became legal recreationally, they, they went and obtained their medical marijuana card, or perhaps more people came to Colorado to buy medical marijuana. So I'm not sure, but there, you can look at anecdotal evidence and see, well, could it be, I can't tell you definitively.
Now, you pointed out that the state is going to impose a 15% excise tax on the production, the cultivation?
It's a 15% excise tax on the sales. So what do we do from the dispensaries?
Okay. And how much is the city government's share of that 15%?
None.
So the state was, has got all the revenue going to them?
To the Medical Marijuana Fund.
You elaborated how all that money's going to be divided up. So, I mean, one of the serious concerns I have is the proponents of retail sales in our city often talk about the tax revenue potential, and I have a very serious concern that the tax revenue either will be de minimis or very difficult to collect. Another follow-on question, if there is, if, if I sell something that's subject to sales tax, but I do it in violation of a municipal ordinance, I violate the city's land use tax, I still owe the sales tax to the state of California, don't I?
Yes. You owe sales tax on any sale of tangible personal property.
Whether I do it in, in compliance with the laws of the municipality I'm in or not?
Correct.
So theoretically, we ought to have a basis to collect, the state ought to have a basis to collect sales tax from any person who's operating illegally?
If they make three or more sales a year, then it's a retail sale.
Okay.
And subject to sales tax.
Thank you very much for being here. Your presentation was very illuminating, and I think did shed a lot of new light on, on the taxation issue.
My pleasure.
So thank you. I wanted to ask our city manager a question. Are we receiving a sales tax revenue right now from any of the operators who are operating in violation of the city's ordinances?
Yes, we, we do receive sales tax from one business.
From one of the eight that we know of?
One of the eight illegal dispensaries, yeah.
What of the other seven, do they, they intend to pay their sales taxes and comply with the laws? See, this is one problem I really have, is there's too much criminal enterprise in the, in the business now. I'm not accusing all people that are involved in cultivation and sale of being criminals, but there's too little compliance and too little regard for the law. And as with all medicine, it's just got to be strictly regulated, and people have got to follow the laws. We've got to be a nation of laws. We've got to be people who abide by the law, and we've got to, as government, enforce the law. Otherwise, you know, who decides which laws are meaningful and which aren't? And that's a scary thing when government can cherry pick which laws it enforces and which it doesn't. So I, I really do have concerns about the fact that these businesses are operating not only in violation of the land use ordinance, but they, they're tax evaders. They're evading the state's sales tax, and, and they're really stealing in that regard from the people of California and from the people of Vista. So on the taxation question, I just wanted to make that point. Thank you for your time.
Councilmember Green?
All right. I just had another follow-up question when I heard you talking, and I wrote it down so that I wouldn't forget. I know you said after the first of the year, the state couldn't legally take any tax on medical marijuana. There's a Citizens Initiative out, I'm sure that you're aware of, which basically says, hey, we want to pay so much money in sales tax, you know, forever, basically. In the event a Citizens Initiative passed where they're recommending they want to be taxed on something and that money be paid to the city, does the state Board of Equalization have authority to tell citizens who want to be taxed that they can't be taxed on something?
Well, okay, sales tax is due on the retailer, not on the customer. So it would be, the customers would have to voluntarily give it to the retailer, and the retailer send it in. It would be considered what we call excess tax reimbursement, which you're not supposed to do. But if you do collect excess tax reimbursement, you have to send it to the state. So, I mean, it, it would be a violation of the law to collect tax on something that's not taxed.
So would they send it to the state with a fiduciary agreement that the money gets allocated to the city, or, or does that never happen?
If the sale is made and the place of sale was Vista, then they would get the sales tax based on the coding of the return, but it's still excess tax reimbursement, which would be technically wrong.
But what you're saying is, is that if there was a fiduciary agreement with the business that wanted to pay tax to get that tax money to the city on a medical marijuana issue, it, it could hypothetically happen?
You could report sales tax that wasn't due, but when, if you were audited, then they would-
Give them back money? Are you going to audit them for paying too much taxes?
If you were, were responsible to make sure you paid the correct tax.
And I don't mean to be sarcastic. I'm just wondering, like-
More tax than was due, and you didn't collect it from your customers, you just voluntarily paid it yourself, we would have to give it back to you.
Yeah, because I think the, the big deal is, you know, medical marijuana in our city has obviously cost us money. We have been fighting it aggressively. Some people think we haven't been fighting it, you know, aggressively enough, but we have been spending money on it, no doubt. The presentation given before, you said our Vista voters generally want medical marijuana in our city. So as a council, I was elected by the citizens, and if that's what they want, I'd like to figure out a way to give the citizens of what they want as their representative while still balancing the financial aspect of it for my city. So I'm glad that you're here as well, because this is great information for us as a city on how could we get the funds back to our community, because that's the big sale, is, hey, look, we'll pump money into your community, you know, if inevitably you give your community what they want. And I think that the citizens that are saying, hey, we, this initiative sounds okay to us, is on the presumption that it's going to bring revenue to the community. So if there is no way at all to bring any revenue to the community for medical marijuana, and there never will be, that's something we'll obviously need to take a step back and look at. It was my understanding that there was a Citizens Initiative deal with the Supreme Court that's going to be out at the end of August, that's going to tell us if we are in fact allowed to receive taxes in a special election via a Citizens Initiative. And it was my understanding, if that passed, we would be able to get the tax. So I've done some research on how we get money from it, and you telling me there's no possible way for us to make money off of it is, you know, a little questionable to me. So I want to make sure you're absolutely correct before I make a decision without all the information.
Councilman, there are a number of different types of taxes. We all just generally call them sales taxes, but an excise tax, a transaction use tax like our Propel, a sales tax, all have different requirements under the law and may have different allowances based on a, a vote of the people versus simply just selling a product and promising. So those are the types of things, if we get the direction to move forward, that we'll really research and find out exactly what is allowable, and to do our best to, to provide you with all the exact information. But a sales tax, as, as Mr. Renati mentioned, it-
So we don't have to call it a sales tax, is what you're saying? We can call it a medical marijuana tax if we felt like it?
Legally, we would call it what the state would need us to call it in order to-
In order to receive the money. So we could put what, hypothetically, we could call it what we'd like to receive the funds that we've been promised from that industry. We just can't call it a sales tax.
Also knowing, also knowing that we only get back 1% of the tax you sent out.
Okay. So if we say 10 cents, we get one cent on that, whatever. Okay. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Mr. Renati will be here if there are further questions, but at this time, I'd like to ask Captain Hank Turner from the Sheriff's Department to join me. Again, this was part of the direction received earlier this spring, and Captain Turner has, is actively involved in the Sheriff's Department with marijuana enforcement regulation, and so he's going to share his observations.
Good evening. My name's Hank Turner. I'm a captain with the Sandy County Sheriff's Office. I'm currently assigned to the Santee Lakeside-Grossmont-Cuiamaca Community College District area. Before that, I was the lieutenant in charge of Narcotics Task Force for Sandy County for the Sheriff's Office. In that time, the sheriff sent me as one of the representatives up to Colorado. I was also liaison with Washington State to look at their marijuana laws and dispel some of the myths and find out some of the facts behind it. One of the things I kept on thinking of as I was waiting to speak is that, I think it was George Santanya who said, "Those who don't learn from the past, repeat it." With marijuana, there's a lot of people who will say that if you legalize it, you can tax it. And looking in Colorado and looking in Washington State, every municipality that authorizes, whether it be medical or recreational marijuana, still has a black market. And there was a lot of advocacy that if we legalized it, we won't have a black market anymore. And you look at somewhere like in the Denver metropolitan area, which is really the only area in the state of Colorado that legalized it, while it passed statewide, most counties said, no, we're not going to do it. But in the Denver metropolitan area, there are 1,054 marijuana-related businesses in the Denver metropolitan area, which is more than the number of McDonald's, Starbucks, and 7-Elevens combined. Having said that, the state of Colorado has had a, and seen a significant increase in illegal marijuana and sales outside the state. The issue of whether medical, recreational, is tough in that, as I think you're already pointing out, that there's a, it's probably the only industry that is writing its own regulations as they're getting passed. They're not, I don't know if we allow Anheuser-Busch to write their own regulations on alcohol. It's usually the state that does it. But most of these initiatives are written for the industry by the industry. I'm here to answer any questions you may have, or questions about Colorado. I could go through all the stats and facts and predictions that they gave us, you know, including that once we had passage of marijuana, we would see an increase on our homeless. I don't know how things are going in Vista, but so far in Santee, we've seen an increase on our homeless. Same thing with increases in accident rates, those type of things. But I'm here to answer any questions you may have about those policies or questions.
Councilmember Franklin, or Deputy Mayor Franklin?
What kind of specific observations have you been able to make in your analysis and experience here about the types of criminal activities that both prey on these businesses and result from proximity to these businesses?
In talking to Colorado, there were not a lot of additional crime issues related to proximity issues and crime in the surrounding areas. But one of the things that was ported back to us by Colorado, they did not track any marijuana-related crime prior to the passage of, of their law in 2012. So they couldn't really articulate whether that was an increase because of the legalization, because they didn't track anything related to that before. So an example would be if you have a, which they had, a robbery where a store owner who was running a marijuana business was shot and killed. If it happened before, they didn't track it. So they have no idea on those type of increases. One of the things that they have seen since they've gone to legalization is, in a stat that I found very interesting, is 15% of all burglaries in the Denver metropolitan area are related to marijuana businesses, because it's a large cash business, whether it be sales, off-site, growing, there's just a lot of cash involved, so they end up being victims of a lot of burglaries. One of the things that was reported to us is that they've also had, while they have track and trace, they've had issues with track and trace where the security system doesn't work. All of a sudden, all the marijuana's gone and the place- Track and trace is basically where they mark the marijuana, so when it goes from the grower to the processor to the market, that we trace it and know where it goes. So it's not being grown for medicinal or recreational sales in California. And then when they have too much and their profit margin goes down, they ship it out of state. The state is theoretically supposed to be able to track it and trace it with microchips to show exactly where it went. What Colorado found and they've had an issue with is when they have track and trace, that all of a sudden, they get a burglary in the middle of the night with no forced entry, and all the marijuana's gone. All the chips are still there, but all the marijuana's gone.
And you made a comment about homeless rate and something about Santee, and I didn't understand exactly what you were reporting to us there. Could you-
So one of the things when we went there is that the Denver metropolitan area reported an increase of homelessness of almost 100% from 2012 to when we visited in 2015. A number of law enforcement professionals attributed to the increase in marijuana and people coming to Colorado for a specific purpose of using marijuana. What they reported to us is if we pass Prop 64, we would see an increase in our homeless population. I can tell you from my experience in Santee, and what I'm reading in the paper and what we see downtown when I worked at the court there, we're seeing a significant increase in our homeless population. I can't say that there is a direct correlation between increased marijuana usage and homelessness, but that's one of the things that they predicted to us and said if we have additional marijuana sales, or we have legalized marijuana, we're going to see an increase in homelessness, because they saw in Colorado and they said to expect it here.
Was it your experience that homelessness problem increased in proximity to those stores? In other words, the individuals would tend to congregate or to reside in proximity to the, to the stores?
No. It basically is, kind of it gone all over the place. So I'll use Santee example. I think we have- I think we have a dispensary outside the city limits. We don't have any inside the city limits, but we've seen a significant increase in homelessness.
Okay. Well, thank you very much for taking the time to be with us tonight.
Councilmember Green.
Yes, sir. First of all, thank you for being here and thank you for your perspective. I went ahead and took decent notes on everything that you said. And I also appreciate you telling me that there's no direct correlation between homelessness and marijuana dispensaries. It seems as if it's more speculation. I don't know how many baseline reports there are and then other reports after it's been done in our county or cities in San Diego as far as in California goes. But I'd love to see anything that says, hey, if you open dispensaries, your homeless is going to increase. I personally haven't been able to find anything, because I've heard that rebuttal before and I haven't actually found anything. I haven't seen any like articles. Do you know any of...
I would agree with you 100%.
Okay. Okay. I just haven't actually seen any. And the other thing is, is I don't think that we're, I mean, obviously, we'd love to shut down the black market of marijuana. I'd love to shut down the black market of every drug, okay? I'm not going to legalize heroin to try to shut down the black market of it, and I think we're so far away from, you know, ever doing anything like that, it's ridiculous. But I do feel like if we work together with our medical marijuana industry, which is servicing a lot of our citizens in a lot of our county, if you work together with them, it's definitely going to help cut down on the black market. It'll also allow us to possibly put bigger and tougher restrictions on the dispensaries that are operating illegally, in my opinion. So doing nothing has really done a lot of nothing, in my opinion. And since we've even agreed to implement a policy, there have been dispensaries that have knocked on our city attorney's door and closed their doors, is my opinion, or is a fact that's happened. So I really, you know, it's our job to represent the people. I know we're not going to be 100% approval rate on anything that we do. Heck, I've been married for 19 years and she doesn't approve 100% of the stuff I do at any point in time. But I was elected to represent the people of Vista, and I feel like if my citizens, you know, the, the comment that was made by my city, you know, my city manager based off our surveys, that in general Vista voters, not just citizens, these are actually voters, likely voters, high propensity voters, the majority of them think that having medical marijuana storefronts in our city, at least a certain number per se, is important. So I definitely appreciate all that. I think as a city, it gives us a lot to think about and a lot to look out for. I want to make sure we do all those baseline reports, you know, to make sure where we at, where are we going, what type of progress we're making. And I thank you for being here.
If I can answer, one of the things that you said, Councilman Green, is I'm not advocating whether you have recreational, medical, or nothing. That's a decision for you to make as elected officials, not for me. But what I can say is, one of the things that gets said and I've heard over and over, and I saw it in the ballot statement for Prop 64, was the passage of recreational or medical marijuana eliminates the black market. And that was in the ballot statement in the state of California. That is not true. And if you could look at whether it be Colorado or Washington, whether you approve, like Denver did, 1,054 marijuana-related businesses in a city about the size of San Diego, it hasn't stopped the black market and has actually increased. I'm not here to say whether you should or shouldn't do it, that, that's a decision you have to make because you guys are elected, I am not. And it's a tough decision, and I wish you the best of luck in making that decision. But I do want to tell you that when people advocate that say, hey, if we do this, there won't be a problem anymore. I, I know one of the things that I looked at as a sign of Narcotics Task Force was, hey, if we do this, this is great. I can take people off of working illegal marijuana cases, and marijuana grows, and move them over to other type of activities. In talking to Denver and the other municipality, other municipal agents in that area, they were not able to do that. They actually had to hire more people because they had more and more marijuana issues. Cities had to hire, the city of Denver had to hire more code compliance, more fire people, more health and human services. One of the issues with edibles, the state doesn't regulate, it's regulated by the county. Who's going to regulate your edibles? Because allowing the industry to regulate itself is not a good thing. And anytime that the city of Denver, county of Denver, which is the same organization, tried to implement stuff, they were fought at every level, because you're talking about large money, whether it be the amount of pesticides that were on each plant and that were later smoked and caused issues, when the city of Denver stepped in and said, hey, can't do that, the shock might shock you, but the marijuana growers sued and said, hey, you have no proof that smoking pesticides causes health problems, which is true. There is no proof of that, but there is no proof that doing it doesn't cause issues. So before they sued in court, they lost, and now they regulate the amount of pesticides on each plant. But that's the type of thing you're going to be facing, is you're, it's not a simple thing of, hey, we're going to sell it and there's not going to be problems. It's going to be very, very difficult. And the state of California is a very, very large organization, and I'll just leave it at that. It's a lot of area to cover and a lot of details to deal with that you as a elected body are going to be dealing with. And that's your decision. I would not advocate what you decide, that's up to you guys. I'm just here to answer questions and clarify.
I just have one more question, and my question for you is, the numbers that you have, did they, because was, was medical marijuana legal first in Colorado before recreational was legal?
Yes.
Okay. And did they show you like, hey, when we started it with medical marijuana, this is, you know, where we went from there to there? Because I mean, I know right now, we're basically infancy, okay? We're not going to have 1,054 dispensaries in Vista anytime soon. And, and as far as them writing their own laws, I think that's why we're trying to come up with a policy is so that we can have one that makes more sense. So go ahead.
To answer your question, no. And that's part of the issue, you talk about law enforcement, it's not the same everywhere in the country. One of the things that they don't have, and as you guys are aware, we have Argus in, here in San Diego County, which allows us to track whatever, whatever we're looking at, whether it be marijuana, marijuana-related crime, casino-related crime, transient-related crime, that's how we do things, and we really look at intelligence-led policing and kind of track where we're spending our resources, what we're spending our time on. Calls for service, I know that your captain has probably talked about this when we're talking about the budget or how he's spending his resources, but we track that type of thing. In the Denver area, they did not. So when they went from not having any issue, they didn't really start tracking it wholeheartedly until 2014, when it passed, and they started looking at increases in accidents, increases in overdose, they kind of realized, hey, we really need to start tracking this. And then they had burglaries and robberies, and they were classified as burglaries and robberies, not as a burglary of a marijuana location, so they started tracking that, but they didn't start doing that until after the fact. That's one of the reasons why at the county, the DA's office, the city of San Diego, we sent a group, about 40 people to Colorado and met with also with the state of Washington to talk about, hey, what are the issues you faced, what are the hurdles, to make sure that we're doing best practices here in the county and of San Diego, in the city of San Diego, with the DA's office, to make sure that we're not making the same mistakes other people make.
Try to win. Thank you so much, I really appreciate your time.
Councilmember Aguilera.
Thank you, Captain, for being here. Appreciate it. You mentioned something about DUIs. That would be something they would have tracked, I would think, before medical marijuana or recreational marijuana. How has that either increased, not increased, or...
DUIs as a whole decreased once marijuana was legalized. However, the increase in marijuana-related DUIs increased substantially. One of the factors that faces law enforcement is, is there is no standard test for marijuana intoxication. Most drivers, and I'm going to give you a stat and someone's going to call me on it and I don't have it in front of me, but somewhere, I think it was around 69% of drivers, think that they are not impaired when they're driving under the marijuana. There's a belief that it does not cause impairment in driving. There is no standard test. I know that UCSD and the San Diego Police Department are working on a standardized test. So while DUIs as a whole went down, accidents increased. So while DUIs went down, accidents went up, as did the amount of marijuana impaired driving. And they've seen a substantial increase every year that they've looked at it.
So what you're saying is, they're not able to test for medical marijuana, so that they're not able to convict for DUI, yet it appears that there are more impaired drivers and more accidents?
Less, they have less arrests for DUI.
Arrests, yeah.
The marijuana, there is a test to determine if there's marijuana, but, so I'll give you an example. There's a, pretty much a national standard that if you're driving under the influence of alcohol, there's a presumption of guilt if your blood level is above .08. It's pretty common, it comes in our driver's license. We have a little chart where you can only drink so many drinks. Me, being a little heavier, I get to have a couple more, but the blood alcohol level pretty much stays the same, a .08. With marijuana, there is no standard on what it takes to be an impaired driver. So you could have, one person could have .23 parts per million of their blood intoxication and they crashed their car into someone else, and then someone else has .34 parts per million and they're driving fine. So there is no standard, that's the problem. So when you go into court, in front of a jury, you have to be able to say that narcotic affected their ability to drive, which there's a lot of confusion and there is no standard, so it makes it very, very tough to prove those type of cases. Usually needs something else, accident, crashes. So that's kind of the issue they face. What Colorado's starting to see, they've done a lot of additional training, a lot of the money that they've gotten has gone to law enforcement to get them better at identifying the symptoms and signs and impact of, instead of going, hey, it's parts per million, they have to articulate 40 different things, and I'm just throwing out a random number, to show impaired driving. So that's why you're seeing now that as they get better trained, there is an increase in DUI driving related to marijuana since the inception in 2014.
Okay. Thank you.
Deputy Mayor.
Hey, Captain, did you see the news this week from the Insurance Institute for Highway Safety about the average number of collisions in states where marijuana is legalized six days ago? The IIHS, which is financed by, I believe, contributions from almost all the major insurance companies that do vehicular insurance, they reported that in Colorado, Oregon, and Washington states, collision claim frequencies have increased to 3% higher than overall in states where it is not legal. So I, I don't have numbers from IIHS or any other respectable organization on whether DUIs go up or down in aggregate, but we do have some evidence that's recently released by an extremely credible source, that the total number of collisions does take a slight uptick. So there's likely to be increased property damage and injuries to persons where it's legalized. I thought that was an interesting point to note in the debate. I don't know if you saw that.
I did not see that specific study, but that was some of the information that was given to us when I spoke to the State Bureau of Marijuana up in Washington and in Denver, same thing. They both reported more accidents. The number at that time was somewhere around 5% to 6%, but if there's one that says 3%, that's more recent information than what I had when I attended there about 13, 14 months ago.
I see. All right. Thank you.
Okay, that's, that's all I hear from, you want to hear, I have 21 speakers here. Should we start going? Okay. The speakers? Okay. So please remember, you have three minutes to speak. When the light turns yellow, you have 30 seconds left to speak. When it turns red, you have five seconds and you got to wrap it up, okay? So when your time is over, you're going to hear a bell, and then please, no applause or comments from the audience. We need to just be respectful and listen to the speakers, let us listen to them and be respectful of that. So with that, what I'll call, the speakers, I'll call three, and if you could, when I call your name, if you could line up over here, so you, so we keep it kind of moving quickly, that would be appreciated, okay? So we will start with Timothy Bigum, followed by Gail Stanton, followed by Mark Woodward.
Mayor Ritter, counsel, Mr. Johnson, counselor, Ms. Zimmerman. My name is Timothy Bigum. I'm the owner-operator of a live cannabis company. We own our home here in Vista 92081. Our team recently attended the state's public cannabis regulatory hearing in San Jose. Our Sacramento associates were there and gave us a preview of Senate Bill 94. Senate Bill 94 is now the legislative guideline that combines medical and recreational cannabis into one controlled entity. Everyone now waits for the Bureau of Cannabis Control's final directions for implementation with their rules and regulations. We feel confident in moving forward, waiting for your direction, without looking over our Sacramento shoulder. While staff will help direct the council on state mandates that must be followed, the state gives the city council the power to control the presentation of cannabis within their jurisdiction. It was very different developing the business plan for a live cannabis company. The decision criteria changes dramatically when you include that Vista is where we want our future grandchildren raised. The bottom line changes. We have watched and listened to this council from the beginning of this process, and we have tried to incorporate in our business model solutions for your concerns. And as a constituent, we have also tried to respect the feelings of the 43% of voting Vistans that were against the recreational presentation of cannabis in our state. Mayor Ritter, may we add our voice to this ordinance process and ask that text be considered to protect the city of Vista's permitted cannabis businesses from outside city limits intrusion from other cannabis businesses. It should be regrettable, stringently unlawful to conduct any cannabis business in Vista post-ordinance without holding a specific permit issued by the city. And also, Mayor, could we discuss, Ms. Zimmerman's overview had a directive about limiting delivery from 6:00 AM to 6:00 PM, and we would ask if we could have a discussion about maybe extending that to 7:30 PM on that end of the delivery? And there's, there's service reasons why. And I, I could answer any question, hopefully, if you have any.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Uh, Gail Stanton, followed by Mark Woodward, followed by Robert Bush.
Good evening. 21 years ago, Prop 215 was voted on, elected by the people of California. We spoke in 1996 and voted to have medicinal marijuana in the state of California. For 21 years, the city council and this city has missed out on millions of dollars of tax revenue. You could use any term you'd like to determine what kind of tax. We are suggesting a special use tax. That would be a 7% special use tax that would go directly to the city of Vista. It would not go to the state of California, directly to the city of Vista. We want to pay tax on this. I would like to pay tax on this. I am going to purchase marijuana, whether I have to purchase it with dignity inside of a dispensary, or whether I purchase it like a drug addict in an alley of Vista. I've purchased marijuana every day for 20 years, okay? If I have to purchase it in an alley, I am at the risk of getting raped, I am at the risk of getting robbed. I want to purchase my medication with dignity and with respect. I don't take pharmaceuticals, I don't drink alcohol. Many of the citizens of Vista do not drink alcohol and do not take pharmaceuticals, and we deserve safe access to our medication, just like the people who take pharmaceuticals can get a prescription from their doctor and walk into CVS with dignity. Okay, I've been denied dignity for 20 years, and I've been frowned upon for wanting to purchase a medication that was more natural. The citizens of Vista have spoken. I personally worked on the campaign, I knocked hundreds of doors in the city, okay? I vote in this city, I have gotten hundreds of signatures from registered voters who are for our 7% special use tax and who are for the regulation of medical marijuana in this city. You guys represent us, I'm telling you, I've knocked hundreds of doors and the people have spoken. As far as alcohol goes, I'm absolutely disgusted by the belching beaver sign that you have allowed in our city. It offends me and it repulses me, quite frankly, when I walk past it. People are coming out drunk, I see it every Sunday. I drive for Lyft, every Sunday I pick up drunk people, and they are puking in the car, they're puking out the side, because you've allowed so many alcohol permits, and you're not allowing permits for businesses who want to pay taxes, want to do the right thing here. The black market in Vista, there will be 100% black market. If you vote zero tolerance, marijuana will be 100% black market. The officer was kind enough to say there's some black market industry, that will always occur, but if you do not impose some regulations, it'll be 100% black market. I'm telling you that myself and all other cancer patients and people who use this medication will still access it, whether or not you receive tax money or not from it. As I mentioned, we just deserve the respect and dignity to be able to purchase our medicine. This new industry brings new jobs to the city. The officer mentioned that security had to be increased, as did police and fire. That's great. Don't you want to hire more police officers? Don't you want to hire more people for the city? Thank you.
Thank you. Mark Woodward, followed by Robert Bush, followed by Robert North.
Hello, Mayor and City Council members. Thank you guys so much for this time and me being able to come and speak. Keep it short, sweet, and simple. I'm here just speaking for the people of disability, seriously, patrons and/or veterans. People who have a better society of traveling to a place and/or coming home, on the easier and safer access to medical marijuana within the city of Vista, we find that the 85% of people that come into these dispensaries are over the age of 55. And out of those, they're just going to work from nine to five and wanting to come to an area that's within their city and paying within their community. Now, a lot of places within our community, I like to go and enjoy and spend my money out, because they're mom and pop shops or they're local businesses. Now, the place myself or other people that put themselves in harm's way to traveling to LA or Santee, where I don't know one corner to the other in Santee, I'd be putting myself in harm's way and wouldn't want that. in harm's way and wouldn't want that. In other hands, I would like to be able to come to a city and live in the city that we can work with and everybody be on that same page of public safety. Thank you so much for your time today, and I hope that you guys can be able to resolve this. I understand there's a lot of kinks and hurdles in this road. And sometimes, in order to accomplish these hurdles, you got to run into them. And once you do, you'll walk around it and you'll find your way through it. Thank you guys so much.
Thank you, sir. Robert Bush, followed by Robert North, followed by Erika Leary.
Good evening. My name is Robert. My background for much of my adult life has been as a martial arts and safety instructor. Kids, women, children, specifically in practical self-defense. Also, an ordained deacon, and I was a choir director in the local Vista church for many, many years. Those two things put a responsibility on me. One is to defend the people that I care about, and two, on the other side, to be a mouthpiece for what was my congregation, but now it's the city, okay? I also have worked towards this particular issue quite diligently. Before that, last year, I spent a good amount of time trying to collect local businesses together to work solely, outside this issue altogether, on working together to create more of a local circuit of people who use local businesses rather than multinational corporations, keeping the flow of money in the city of Vista. I fell in love with the city of Vista in that regard. I've met almost every business owner in the city. And over the last year now, I've been very diligently working towards this medical cannabis issue, okay? I've talked to thousands of people. I've literally gotten over 1,000 signatures in this city from people who want to either put this up to vote because they feel like they have a choice in the say in the matter, or who flatly say yes. 65 and up communities tend to sign the most. Because what most people don't know in the city is that when the officer stated that they're in Colorado now that there's more medical cannabis than there are McDonald's, Subway, and Starbucks, I think combined was what he said, that's what is happening in Vista right now, okay? That number you have eight is incorrect. There's more than eight medical dispensaries in the city of Vista. Just because they didn't wave at you and tell you they're there doesn't mean they're not there, okay? There's over a dozen at least, I'll say conservatively. That's more than all the Subways, McDonald's, and Starbucks in the city combined. I believe you would agree with that. If that number is correct, that is over 12. With that said, all these things that we're talking about, about introducing this to a city, are we going to do this? It's all moot, all right? This has been here for years. There's like three or four down Vista, there's Santa Fe, they're all over. And a lot of people don't know that. We're not introducing something new to the city to see what kind of crime will happen. We're asking you to lower the number of medical dispensaries that are in our city. I am very much for these medical cannabis dispensaries, but I also told you I'm a martial arts instructor. I also told you I have a firm grasp in my church in this city. And I don't want to see crime either. I want lessons. There is one right now in the same intersection as a park where I take a four-year-old to go play, and I don't like that he can smell it from the park. I would like it to be moved at least 1,000 feet from that park. We want regulations. What's happening with this inaction of this '96 law, which is now 21 years old, okay? Let me backtrack. When this law was passed in '96, it wasn't up to the city of Vista to decide if you want that or not. It was up to you to decide how you're going to go about it. And the constituents have also said in your city that they want it. So the question isn't whether or not we're going to have it.
I need you to wrap up.
Okay. It's how are you going to handle it? And we're offering a 7% special use, that's the term, tax, to pay so that these people can have their dignity. Thank you.
Thank you. Robert North, followed by Erika Leary, followed by John Byrum.
Good evening, Mayor Ritter, City Councilman. I've been a 14-year retailer here in Vista, and my only real concern in assuming that it's going to be passed and it's going to become legal in Vista, which I don't see that happening either through proposition or through city council action. But my concern is how are these licenses going to be allocated? Because these licenses are going to be very sought after. I would like to see that the city of Vista find a way to allocate these licenses in such a way that has integrity and that avoids the problems other cities have had with endless litigation of those who lost. And I don't know how you do that, but currently in the proposals that we have, an RFP is the only thing that we really get on what it's going to take to open one of these. And I would like to see that more defined, whether it's a lottery process like they ran in Washington, or some other kind of process that fairly allocates those licenses. That's all I have.
Thank you. Erika Leary, followed by John Byrum, followed by John Donovan.
Good evening, Mayor and Councilmembers. My name is Erika Leary, and I'm the program manager for the North Coastal Prevention Coalition, whose mission is to reduce the harm of alcohol, tobacco, marijuana, and other drugs in the cities of Carlsbad, Oceanside, and Vista through community action, education, support, and collaboration. My husband is a teacher in Vista Unified, and our children have grown up attending Vista schools. And though I've been in the substance abuse prevention field for over 20 years, I think they've actually witnessed more directly the impacts of marijuana use on young people as they've seen students slowly slip away from their potential when they start choosing pot over schoolwork, sports, activities, and family. I know I've been here before you many times before, often advocating for regulations of some kind, based on research evidence that they've demonstrated effectiveness in improving public health and safety. Examples include reducing alcohol outlet density, adopting tobacco retail licensing, and expanding smoke-free areas. At this point in marijuana policy, however, I'm concerned that drafting regulations will be nothing more than an exercise in futility. I see no evidence that they will be followed, or the efforts to pass a local initiative allowing a dozen dispensaries would stop. The city of Oceanside approved marijuana deliveries over a year ago, yet they have received no applications from people wanting to deliver marijuana. If you look online, however, there's no shortage of people willing to bring you pot. We also hear from cities around the state that those who regulate marijuana dispensaries are left fighting at least as many, if not more, illegal ones than before they adopted the regulations. Perhaps all of Vista's existing dispensaries operating illegally would voluntarily close for the next six months while the state finalizes their regulations. Then you could revisit the issue in 2018 with more confidence that regulations might actually mean something. Thank you.
Thank you. John Byrum, followed by John Donovan, followed by Danny Osborn. Orsburn, Byrne.
Hi, my name is John Byrum. I'm from North Coastal Prevention Coalition. Mayor Ritter and Councilmembers, thank you for letting me address you tonight. I understand the difficult situation you are in. The initiative being circulated is not regulation of marijuana shops. It actually just is the opposite. It would take away the city's ability to regulate or get rid of illegal shops by changing violations from misdemeanor to an infraction, which is a $250 fine. A marijuana shop can pay this fine with its sales in a matter of minutes. This initiative is all about money. The city, if the city decides to create their own regulations and ensure that there will be many more illegal shops, just like the cities of San Diego and Los Angeles, the cost to regulate one shop is considerable. I sent to Councilman Franklin the individual that regulates the shops for the county and what he goes through, and you might take a look at talking with him also, his Sheriff's The one thing, talking about Colorado, they always talk about the money they brought in. They never talk about the money they've spent. Their social service costs have skyrocketed, but we never hear those numbers. And with Prop 64, you're allowed to grow six plants in your backyard. If you're just a crummy grower, that's six pounds. That's six pounds, and that stuff's all going to be around the street too. So, just something to think about. Thanks.
Thanks, John Donovan, followed by Johnny, it's like Orsburn, followed by Alicia Griffiths.
Yeah, I'm John Donovan, Councilmembers. I've lived here since 1972. I just bought a house, two doors, from a marijuana place that just opened up. I can just tell you by fact, most of these people are less than 55. It's not uncommon to see them, one person go in, buy it, share it with everybody else in the car. We've heard testimony that it's extremely easy to get a medical marijuana card. You can go in the reader and find Dodgers that will give it to you. It's not a problem. So, as far as tax for the state, these people are just going to get the card and say, "Look, I got card." I've worked with people at work that carry a card, and they're carrying a pound of it. How are you going to regulate it? I don't know. I don't have the answer. I don't see it happening. You know, if you're going to have it, can you just get a limited number of them? I've worked with a guy that, he personally used to sell it, out of his house, right out of an apartment. At where I live, there's constantly four to six cars going in this place, and they're parking off the side of the street and in the parking lot. My neighbor will tell you, he sees people shooting up. Come on. Just, all I'm asking is regulation. And that's all I got to say. Thank you.
Thank you. Danny Orsburn, followed by Alicia Griffiths, followed by Mark Carpenter.
Thank you for giving me a little time. My biggest problem are the youth that are coming to these places and driving. It's a danger to the citizens of Vista. I'm also a federal employee, and I worry about testing positive since it's right next door, and I smell the skunk smell all the time. I worry about that. If I was to have an accident and test positive, I would lose my job. So, and then the sheer numbers of people that are going, it's huge. They're in the parking lot all day long. I got up, because I'm an elderly man, at 1:00 in the morning, they were still doing business. I wonder about hours of regulation and traffic flow, and I see no cop presence, very little. They may be undercover. I don't know what they're doing, but I don't like that. That's really all I can say about that. Everybody's saying a lot of the same things. I do have another, I have two more things. I live on Francis Street, or Francis Drive, and on one side, it's spelled with an IS, and on the, this is a three-house street. And on the other side, it's spelled with an ES. And I know that if I put ES on my mail, I don't get it. So, I was wondering if the city of Vista could just make it the same spelling.
Chuck retired, so...
I'm sorry. And then the last thing I have is, also in our block, there's a company that went, lost funding. It's called A Solution for Change, and they help people that need help. However, when they lose their funding, they abandon their property, vagrants take over, and that's where I saw the IV drug user. I went to check the trash that someone had thrown out in their parking lot. I had to get out of there. It's scary. High school and junior high school kids are walking by this dispensary and this facility every day, back and forth from school to home and vice versa. I think it's a serious safety concern for them, and it's a blight on my neighborhood and the city of Vista that A Solution for Change, their windows are broken out, the structures needs maintenance. It's terrible. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Is it Alisna? Okay, Alisna Griffiths, followed by Mark Carpenter, followed by Macario Placentia.
Hi, thank you for having us today. I'm here to ask you, the city of Vista, the city council, to take a stand and to ban marijuana storefront dispensaries and deliveries in the city of Vista. This is an issue that I have been following for many years, and I feel very strongly about it. Citizens of this community are negatively impacted by the existence of marijuana dispensaries in our community, legal or otherwise. Dispensaries are magnets for crime and other illegal drug use. They promote an unhealthy lifestyle with addiction and despair. Now, adults who care about their families like me, and they care about their communities like me, we want more for ourselves and our community than addiction and despair. We want smart, thoughtful, caring adults and teenagers who contribute to society and those around them in a very positive way. Now, the National Institute of Drug Abuse says marijuana use causes long-term and possibly permanent impaired learning and memory loss. Marijuana dispensaries will increase the recreational use of marijuana by minors. Increased access to marijuana in Vista will increase the rate of impaired driving and fatal vehicle crashes, as well as increase the rates of violent crime. I reject the idea that marijuana is acceptable and safe for me, for my family, including my three teenagers, and it's not safe for our community. Please protect all Vista residents and ban marijuana dispensaries and delivery access. Thanks.
Thank you. Mark Carpenter, followed by Macario Placentia, followed by Kelly McCormick.
Thank you. My name is Mark Carpenter. Would all those that are opposed to the current marijuana business initiative please stand?
No, we don't.
That are opposed.
We can't do that. We can't do that, so just...
Okay. I apologize.
Give us your feedback here.
I have been a Vista Townsite resident and homeowner since 2003. I'm speaking here tonight to express my opposition and concern for the current medical cannabis business initiative. First and foremost, it does nothing to assure the safety of our children, residents, or communities. It asks for exclusions that other businesses must adhere to. It allows placement of the businesses almost anywhere because of the verbiage used in several places pertaining to zoning areas and in the inclusion of so many zoning types. The other reason I am speaking here tonight is to address the ongoing criminal and dysfunctional behavior and operating procedures in which some of these establishments seem to have been allowed the right to operate. They do this with a boldness and entitlement that I have personally witnessed for the past eight months. Young women are leaving their children in their car with no adult supervision to make purchases. Youth congregate in adjoining business areas, waiting for adults to drop off the purchases being made for them. Their patrons park in front of our homes while there are empty parking places in the business lots. They have become so bold in their lack of civil boundaries in our neighborhood that my guest and I witnessed a young woman basically stripped down and changed right outside of her car prior to going into the shop to work. This was a little parked in front of a family resident. They do this acting as if they have total immunity from all accountability from law enforcement or the communities they invade. While this has been my personal experience in the Vista Townsite area, I've also witnessed responsible storefronts providing safe access in areas allowed throughout California and other states, and would gladly support a responsible initiative, especially if designed by a group of stakeholders, including law enforcement, medical professionals, consumers, and cannabis experts, and professionals of the AOD and other important agencies that provide social services. I signed a petition after being misled by the false presentation of signature solicitors. Since then, I took the time to read the whole 24-page document, which references other documents that then need to be accessed to clearly understand what is being proposed. I cannot in good conscience support initiatives that are so broadly written. I would like to thank the council members and the mayor for your patience and your communications through me in dealing with my frustrations with dealing with the current situation across the street from my house directly. I'd also like to thank the experts in their input in providing the information that I so desperately seeked this last month in reviewing this document and finding the same, came to the same conclusion that our city would not gain no taxes because of Prop 64. I'd also like to add, it is also referenced quite often in the Compassionate Care Act, which I would also like to indicate that it has no reference to providing in-kind services or providing services to, like the gentleman that spoke could certainly use some medication on a free-term basis. If these agents are truly going to provide...
Your red light went on, so your time is up.
They should contribute to the community and do it in an appropriate manner. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Macario Placentia, Kelly McCormick, and followed by Barbara Gordon.
Thank you, señores. Can you speak, Mr. President?
Okay, okay.
Primarily, no estoy de acuerdo en la marijuana.
He said he's not in...
He said he's not in, in that agreement with the initiative, the marijuana sales. He said they continuously smoke that and his grandchildren are smelling, smelling the smoke of it. He said it's near a school and there's a lot of children always like passing in front of the place where they do do all the marijuana smoking.
Okay, yes, gracias.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Kelly McCormick, followed by Barbara Gordon, followed by Judy Strang.
Good evening, I'm Kelly McCormick. Thank you for your time tonight, and thank you for your past efforts to prohibit marijuana-related businesses. Those efforts have helped Vista families and business owners, and I ask you to continue the fight to keep pot shops out of Vista. Those who want to sweep in and make money will try to tell you that Prop 64 was a mandate, and that now anything and everything should be not only allowed, but also advertised and encouraged. This could not be further from the truth. Prop 64 concerns only this, not punishing someone for smoking or growing small amounts of marijuana in their own home. It does not give a green light to marijuana storefronts. The so-called Citizens Initiative is being financed and run by professionals from other parts of the state. They see an opportunity to cash in with no regard to how the spread of pot shops will affect families and the neighborhoods where they're located. When pot shops occupy storefronts, it normalizes it for teenagers. As the mother of a middle school and a high school student, I can tell you that it is hard to fight society's message that pot is harmless and fun. The pot sold in these shops is far stronger than anything that was available to previous generations. And in addition, edibles take about 30 minutes to have an effect, so the teens keep imbibing, thinking that nothing is happening. This is how many of them end up addicted or even hospitalized from an overdose. There's plenty of evidence that pot from these shops winds up on the street and in the hands of kids, and unfortunately, I know it firsthand. In addition, Colorado and Washington have experienced dramatic increases in drivers testing positive for marijuana. And in California, the percentage of drivers who were involved in fatal crashes and tested positive for marijuana nearly doubled over a nine-year period, from 9% to 16.5%. I urge you to keep pot shops out of Vista and to protect Vista's families and neighborhoods. Thank you.
Thank you. Barbara Gordon, followed by Judy Strang, followed by Kathleen Lippett.
Thank you. My name is Barbara Gordon, and I am County Office of Education, Friday Night Live Youth Group Advisor for high school students. And our youth are most at risk when there's increased of access and availability. Pot shops will lower the perception of harm among our young people. We know marijuana is being purchased at these dispensaries and being resold on our high school campuses. According to our high school principals, they are finding plastic medicine bottles that the marijuana comes in on their campuses and in the parks nearby. In the city of San Diego, where they regulate pot shops, they have more unpermitted storefronts than any place in the county. This is the same, as you've heard, a situation in Colorado. So, don't think by regulating you are going to control the unpermitted pot shops. Recent data collected by the county's Healthy Store, Healthy Community Project indicated that there is a direct correlation between what our children see in the communities like pot shops and the children's expectation to use marijuana as a normal part of the neighborhood life. Reported by the San Diego County Center for Community Research, indicated that the average number of violent crimes and violent properties are greater in census tracts where there is more, more, or one or more pot shops compared to census tracts without them. As adults, it is our responsibility to create a healthy environment for our children to grow up in. Pot shops are detrimental to the public health and safety of our community. Please prohibit them. Thank you.
Thank you. Judy Strang, followed by Kathleen Lippett, followed by Karina Contreras.
Good evening, Judy Strang. I'm the Executive Director of San Diego Alliance for Drug for Youth. We're a prevention collaborative that serves the San Diego region, which begins in the south in the Carmel Valley, City of San Diego area, Del Mar, Solana Beach, Encinitas, into La Costa and Carlsbad. And I wanted to share with you our perspective regarding marijuana storefronts. First of all, the cities of Del Mar, Solana Beach, and Encinitas did have a ballot initiative, a pot shop initiative, which failed in all three of those cities. And those three cities, as well as Carlsbad, as you know, ban marijuana storefronts and cultivation as well. However, in the city of San Diego, because our school district spans into Carmel Valley, we've had some experience because we have one permitted pot shop in the city of San Diego, but so far permitted 15. Although, as was pointed out, we have 45 to 50 unpermitted pot shops in the city of San Diego. And we have noticed that wherever there's an effort to regulate, then you see an increase in unpermitted pot shops. So, don't think regulation solves any problems, it doesn't. But we've had a lot of experience with where that pot goes from that pot shop that's in our part of the world. And it's a very unfortunate situation, but it's landing at our schools that are very close, as it happens, as well as with our teenagers. I did want to make one thing clear about Prop 215 and about Prop 64. First of all, access already exists. A caregiver and a patient are allowed to grow, possess, distribute, transport marijuana. Access exists. You do not need a commercial enterprise for it to be available to patients. And what we do know from the public health world is what drives team decisions is what they see as messages. And what's a clear message in a community is what you allow as a business. And when you allow marijuana storefronts, you are commercializing and normalizing use, and you see increased teen use. It is part of what we know from public health. I did want to make sure that you knew that with SB 94 that was signed by the governor today, all of the things that it will put into place regarding licensing and requirements has to be enforced by you. It's not enforced by the state. It's very clear that our local governments will have to enforce these regulations. Bans work way better and are much easier to enforce than regulations. Thank you.
Thank you. Kathleen Lippett, followed by Karina Contreras, followed by Nanette Stam.
Good evening, council members. My name is Kathleen Lippett, and I'm here on behalf of San Diegans for Safe Neighborhoods. One of the most troubling results of a city's decision to legitimize the use and sale of a drug that is still federally illegal, and moreover, at every level, marijuana business activities, whether it's growing, manufacturing hash oils to make edibles, delivering or selling it, there are no associated benefits to youth, families, neighborhoods, or neighboring businesses. To the contrary, while the profits of these businesses are generally privatized, the associated costs are borne by the public. Following the adoption of regulations, cities and counties find themselves spending unprecedented resources to control the problem that they created. These diverted resources belong to residents. They don't want those resources diverted to respond to nuisance complaints, loitering, car break-ins, et cetera. Wherever these storefronts are located, they cause problems for legitimate community businesses who find themselves being intimidated, harassed, and bullied by dispensary customers. They are also threatened with unending litigation because the marijuana makes exorbitant profits, and they can afford to keep them in court and put them out of business. If this issue was about marijuana as a medicine, dispensaries would not be primarily selling high THC marijuana. The high THC marijuana today is little more than a hybridized, manufactured, highly genetically-modified product. It is no longer the natural plant that it once was that contained 1% to 3% THC. I hope that you will maintain your prohibition against storefronts and protect your communities and abide by the federal, the state and federal laws that most city officials took an oath to obey. Thank you.
Thank you. Karina Contreras, followed by Nanette Stam, followed by Barbara Manino.
Hello. Thank you for giving us the opportunity to review this. It's, it's, you know, obviously really important to the citizens here of Vista. I'm, I'm actually really curious as the, what the percentage is of approval that came from that poll. I was under the impression that we were going to spend up to $35,000,000 to poll Vistons to make a decision whether or not, you know, we're going to move forward with retail marijuana, and we were going to base that on the percentage of people that approve it or disapprove it. So, it, it does seem like, you know, the majority of people polled wanted that. I'm still looking for a definitive percentage on that. So, if you guys have that, that would be great. I do want to agree with some of the concerns that have been brought up. I myself have seen at these dispensaries, there's not enough parking. I'm going to say parking again, there's not enough parking, which leads me to think that there's not enough dispensaries. It could be a, that could be a radically different conclusion than what some other people are, you know, coming up with. But obviously, if these establishments are being utilized so much, and we still have, you know, not enough parking spaces, then we should figure out a way to accommodate more stores, more dispensaries. That way, we can keep the safety component. We want safe, open access. So, let's figure out a way to move forward and create some safety here in Vista. I, I don't want my neighbors to have to deal with, you know, a dispensary next door that has enough parking for maybe five cars, and obviously, more people are going to be using that at the same time than, than, is it, than that establishment has allocated parking spaces. So, let's really be conscious of the critiques that Vistons have brought up today and figure out a way to have open, safe access that spreads the dispensaries throughout Vista and does take into consideration the neighborhood that it's in. So, another thing I wanted to address is that the way that this has, this was presented by the sheriff, I'm really glad that he did bring up some of these concerns, but when the probing questions came, there was no correlation between the concern and the, and the conclusion, right, and the, the actual evidence behind it. So, I have personally spoken to Dave Myers, who is a sheriff, and he's, you know, going to run in 2018 to be the sheriff. And he thinks that we have been wasting too much money pursuing this. So, let's figure out a way to be a little bit more fiscally responsible with our money, and let's just move forward with the conclusion of this poll that cost us so much money. So, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Nanette Stam, followed by Barbara Manino, followed by Janet Osaro.
Good evening, mayor and council members. My name is Nanette Stam, and I'm the Chief Health Promotion Officer at Vista Community Clinic. I'm also a resident of Vista and a mother of three young children. And I know you've heard numerous stories from many about how marijuana provides relief to help them lead their lives. And while I can't dispute their personal claims, I can assure you that the health risks of marijuana use are real, especially for adolescents. Chronic use is associated with increased rates of anxiety, depression, suicidal thoughts, and schizophrenia. 64% of Vista's alternative high school students report having used marijuana, and 2/3 report that getting pot is very or fairly easy to obtain. Adolescent use rates in Colorado are the highest in the nation, and I will leave you with some copies of our Vista youth data so you can see that. I don't believe the timing is right for Vista to draft regulations to permit dispensaries. The state is still in the process of drafting regulations that will include both medicinal and recreational marijuana. We are a small city with limited resources. Our annual budget represents just 5% of the City of San Diego's $1.3 billion budget, where dispensaries are already permitted. Vista cannot be expected to meet every medical need of its citizen. People often travel for specialty services. And 70% of the jurisdictions in Colorado continue to prohibit commercial marijuana, at least for now. That may be the best course of action for Vista. Thank you.
Thank you. Barbara Manino, followed by Janet Osaro, followed by Gilbert Villarreal.
Good evening. My name is Barbara Manino, and I am a resident of Vista. I've lived here six years, but I also served as the Chief Executive Officer for the Vista Community Clinic for 30 years. I love Vista, and I'm concerned about the health and well-being of all of its residents. We've heard a lot of pros and cons about whether to allow legal medical marijuana dispensaries today. I want to know if you know that 18% of the alternative high school students in Vista report that they use marijuana daily, and one out of four of them report that they get it from dispensaries. I want to know if Vista is prepared to dedicate the time, resources, and expertise to drafting the complex regulations to permit dispensaries? We're a small city with limited resources to oversee a regulatory process that the state is still drafting. I'm concerned that Vista can't properly regulate medical marijuana dispensaries. We already have several operating in our city illegally. And after listening to Ally's presentation, I can understand why they're not closed down yet, but if we can't close down the illegal dispensaries, how are we going to regulate the legal ones? Why support people's legal use of medical marijuana for medical purposes? They can obtain it in the City of San Diego, it's not that far away. If Vista cannot control illegal dispensaries now, how can it regulate legal ones? Until such time that Vista can ensure its residents that can fully enforce its regulations, I ask that you continue to ban these dispensaries. Thank you.
Thank you. Janet Osaro, followed by Gilbert Villarreal.
Hi, good evening. I'm going to be handing out a paper that was, comments from the Union Tribune editorial by Dr. Lev, who is the Chief Inscripts Mercy Hospital, San Diego Emergency Department, and Chair of Emergency Medicine Oversight Commission. And then Dana Stevens is the Executive Director of Community Action, Service, and Advocacy. And what it will do is just give you the written comments from these professionals regarding a lot of the different information you heard tonight. So, thank you.
Thank you. Gilbert Villarreal, followed by Dr. Kathleen Boyle, followed by Michelle Sulser.
My name is Gilbert Villarreal. I'm here speaking tonight in opposition to the current initiative to allow medical cannabis dispensaries. I am a long-term Shadow Ridge resident, and I am retired from the social services business due to stage four leukemia diagnosis. I'm in opposition of this initiative because of the following reasons. It does not ensure public safety, and it includes multiple zoning areas that allow placement anywhere. These dispensaries create nuisance, as I have personally witnessed. Patients and employees have no respect for property, residents, business owners. These establishments create hangarounds and coexistence with local youth. Adults make purchases who can't, make purchases for youths that can't qualify for medical cards, you know. While this has been something that I've seen in the Townsite area, I've also seen responsible ownership in other areas. I also, I also like to state that I believe in this, in the access to legal access, but it needs to be done through a correct policy. This is not it. Thank you.
Thank you. Dr. Kathleen Boyle, followed by Michelle Sulser.
Hi, good evening. Looks like we're running late, so I don't want to say everything I have here. I want to try to cut to the chase. I've been hearing a lot of demonizing of marijuana, which I think is astounding. And some of the things that people are saying, I really don't understand. I, I worked for a long time in drug abuse research at UCLA, and I have never seen some of the things that people are talking about. What does injecting drugs have to do with marijuana? I must have interviewed hundreds of injection drug users, people who inject heroin as well as cocaine. They never mention marijuana. It's not something in their world anymore. So, I think that was just strange. Also, the storefronts. I don't know the places that have, just dispensaries in Vista. There was one that was on the corner of Robalini and South Santa Fe, just where it turns to Mission. Somebody pointed it out to me, that's a dispensary. There's nothing on the front of these storefronts that says, "Hey, get your pot here." So, I don't know how people think that their kids are going to be so influenced by the pot shops. The pot shops are very discreet. That corner now has a construction company, if you want to drive by. It says construction, it didn't say marijuana in the old days, it didn't say anything. It didn't say anything. It's much less addictive and much less, causes many fewer problems than alcohol and nicotine. Obviously, it's not perfect, and people can have trouble with it, and adolescents shouldn't be smoking, shouldn't be smoking it on a regular basis chronically. But how do, now, somebody mentioned that minors are getting, the high school students are getting their pot from the dispensaries? How? You can't, you have to be over 21 to get it from a dispensary. It's much easier to get it to somebody down the street than at a dispensary. So I think that's one of the main facts in favor of medical marijuana, and I think we're getting away from the main purpose of medical marijuana, which are the patients. So the people who use medical marijuana, who have valid illnesses, valid conditions, valid issues, we have to remember them and not be distracted by some of the hyperbole. Thank you.
Thank you. Michelle Sulser.
Good evening. Thank you for allowing me to speak. I do not come from the cannabis space. I am now currently a cannabis consultant. I come from Boeing. I worked eight and a half years building SOPs, doing lean manufacturing, understanding how systems need to be implemented, and that is the key for the cannabis space. In SB 94 that just got signed by Governor Brown today, it explicitly says that each dispensary or business or testing facility needs SOPs. This is going to mandate and standardize everything that these businesses are doing. Then you, as the city, as well as the state, will go around and audit each of these businesses. You will make sure that every standard procedure that's put into place is being implemented into these businesses. This is going to help regulators like yourselves, as well as outside auditors, if you guys cannot, you know, have the manpower to do this, to be able to allow these businesses to make sure that they are following the rules that you guys are making. Another thing that I heard earlier was black market. That is going to be the case no matter what, but as cities and counties explicitly ban or put moratoriums, it's going to increase these black markets. A lot of these black markets come from these smaller businesses that can't afford the fees that the cities and the states have implemented in order to obtain a business license through the application process. That's something that you guys want to keep in mind when you're building ordinances, if it's something that you want to do. As well, I'd also like to touch base on the medical benefit of it. I just read a study in Arizona that said 151 opiate ODs happened, and 15 of those were resulting in deaths. I have not read any studies, and there are many going on by fellow people in the industry, including HelloMD, UC Irvine, that are doing studies to see how cannabis can help resolve opiate addiction, as well as heroin addiction. This is something that I think as the industry progresses forward is going to help everyone understand the benefits of having cannabis for medical patients. I myself am a mother, and I'm not afraid that my daughter is going to see these people, these businesses, these upstanding citizens that come to work every single day, dressed like the rest of you, giving medicine to people that potentially need it, as well as recreational people that are not wanting to use opiates to help their pain, or athletes that don't want to be addicted to something like heroin or opiates. They want to use cannabis. They want to be able to use a natural substance that grows in the ground to help them. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, and that is the last of our speakers, and so I will call on Joe Green. Councilmember Green.
My button is acting up. I must have pushed it way too many times. There's another speaker out here, apparently, who issued a card first, I'm sorry.
So you have to fill out a card and get, you did?
I'll speak after we hear from that speaker.
Or your oral communications later, after this. Okay, okay. Maybe I skipped your card. Okay.
All right. Great job, by the way. First of all, I want to thank everybody for coming forward in the speaking. This is obviously a really hot-button issue in our community. I appreciate everybody coming out, appreciate everybody coming and speaking. There's no doubt, there's bad people out there doing bad business. There's a lot of people in a lot of industries doing really bad business. There's also people that I heard from, even people who are opposed, that say there are people providing good services out there as well. I don't want to speak for my council members, but I'll speak for myself, and I'll say that I oppose the Citizens Initiative, how it's written as well. And that is why we have this policy in front of us today, to hopefully prevent that Citizens Initiative from going through, and to put standard restrictions on the medical marijuana industry that will, in fact, benefit our city financially, as opposed to the drain that it's been on our city in the past. A little bit about me, before I got elected, I worked really hard in our community. Kids are my big thing. I've been married for 19 years. I have an 18-year-old daughter, a 16-year-old daughter, a 14-year-old daughter, and a 10-year-old son. I've been the president of PTAs at elementary level, at high school level, and also the president of PTA the entire school district for years. The only reason why I tell you that is I've met every principal in this district, whether high school, elementary, or middle school, and not one of them has approached me personally, knowing who I am in the community, and the amount of people I speak for, and tell me that medical marijuana is running rampant through their schools and affecting their children. Hopefully, if any of them watch this, and it is a fact, they can come talk to me, but my door's always been open, my phone number's always been available, and I've never been approached by anybody in the school districts, any school, that says this is a huge problem in their city. So, medical marijuana on school campuses, I'm sure it's present here and there, but I don't think this is the biggest problem in our schools. I feel cyberbullying and things like that are much bigger issues for our schools. Last time this was on our agenda, we felt like we didn't have enough information to make a decision, and we were going off of speculation based off of that vote for Prop 64 and the recreational use. And we said, hey, since recreational use passed, maybe we should come out with some mandates for medical marijuana before they're shoved down our throat, per a Citizens Initiative or something like that. We did spend under $35,000. Our city staff was very great in saving a little bit of money on that. They spent less than that for the survey. But the survey in general, as you heard, did say that our residents, our highly propensity voters, our actual Vista voting residents in general, think it's important to have medical marijuana access in our city. There were a lot of other things in that survey. It's a draft. We don't have all the information now. I would like to have results of it released at some point in time, but we want to make sure that we get all the information accurate before you get it. You never send the information outright when you get it. You make sure that it's legit information, and that all the sources that gave the information were accurate. However, with that said, I do feel like the census in Vista is that they want safe, reliable access to medical marijuana. In reviewing our city's policy, and I reviewed it last time, it was in front of us, I want to say, I do have some concerns with this particular policy that we're coming out with, too. Number one, the number of dispensaries being two dispensaries, it's going to be a really crazy process to get those two permits. I don't think a, an 11 or 12 number of dispensaries is what I wanted either. That's what the Citizens Initiative is right around that number, is in double digits. But I understand wanting to start small, and, you know, as far as the number that I was initially throwing out there, I was thinking two to five was going to be the number. If we settled on a number of a council is three to start, I wouldn't be completely opposed to that, but I do think two is small. Five would be ideal, but three would be a start. The other situation is, I would want to make sure that the application process is above reproach. I have no clue how the application process is going to go as a councilman right now. Is it going to be with a board of professionals? Is it going to be as a lottery? Is it going to be something that the council members get to sit on and talk to the business owners and say, hey, what are you going to bring to the table? What are you going to bring to our city? What type of revenue do you anticipate this generating? I don't know, but I would like to make sure that whatever policy staff brings forward ensures that the application process is beyond reproach, which means we're not receiving special favors for selecting anybody in particular, and that it's really a process that, when it's selected, we're not going to have to spend thousands and hundreds of thousands of dollars in litigation because of the permits that we issued. So that is something that's important, so I want to make sure that. The other thing I wanted to make sure of is that there's some type of security deposit that's given by whatever dispensaries we do allow. I think it should be a hefty security deposit in order to operate in our city. That money should be used for our law enforcement and any city services that have to be provided because it's a nuisance there. So I do think that should be a hefty number. I'd like my staff to maybe look elsewhere and see what type of, you know, numbers came up with there, but I think if we're paying a really large chunk of change for that permit, not only are the dispensaries going to be more likely to make sure that they're running good, quality, safe businesses, but they're also going to make sure that people are running them illegally that didn't pay that big fee are, you know, getting taken care of. And with that said, the last thing that I think should be added to this is that the consequences for operating illegally in our city. You know, the Citizens Initiative wanted to make it, you know, drop it from a misdemeanor to an infraction. I'd like to see if we could increase it from a misdemeanor to a felony for operating a dispensary illegally, and you'll tell me as a city attorney what we can do. But I want to make those restrictions as strict as we possibly can. I'd like to make prosecution as swift and severe as possible in this. Right now, we don't have guidelines for prosecution. It seems like there's a lot of hoops to jump through, so I'd like to also have, you know, verbiage written in this where prosecution can be swift and severe. And what swift and severe is, I guess we'll find out. But as far as where I'm at with the medical marijuana initiative and where I think we need to be, I'd like to add those to it, and I would be for a small number of medical marijuana dispensaries within our city. Thank you.
Councilmember Aguilera.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I think it's clear that, well, a couple of things are clear. I think one of the things that's come from our poll is that there is an interest in safe access to medical marijuana. But the other thing I think that's come from this as well is, is that, well, I guess it's the safe part, not just for access, but safety for community members as well. And I've heard from a lot of different community members, some that are here, that the illegal dispensaries are really jeopardizing their life, what they've, you know, their homes, their businesses, and we need to figure out how we can continue to stop that. So I would not be against legalization, thinking that the black market's going to go away. We've heard people over and over say that legalizing will not eliminate the black market. So, but at the same time, I think if we keep it as a, make it illegal, it's not going to eliminate the black market either. So what I would be willing to hear from staff on, or have, to give direction to staff on doing, is, is looking into legalizing too, because I, I do feel for the people that I've heard over the past months that have a legitimate reason for needing medical marijuana, and I do believe there are some business people out there that do handle this legitimately, and will go, you know, as you said, jump through the hoops and, and are willing to pay taxes, and will do this the right way. So I think that if we can offer that, and the people that truly need this for medical reasons, people that want to have safe access to medical marijuana can have a safe place to go, and, you know, have dignity, as one of the speakers spoke about earlier. You know, as far as the, the other ones, we need to continue to try to shut those down, and hopefully the legal ones will help us in that process as well. My biggest thing is going to be, how are we going to tax this? Special use tax, business license, I mean, that's another way that we could, you know, tax a business, essentially, is by having an annual business license. And that's going to be based on, I guess they're, like, my business is taxed on gross revenue, so maybe we can have, look into a specialized tax for medical marijuana. In addition to all these things, I would be interested in finding out what we can and can't do in the research area in allowing in our business park some, some limited research. I think that's a growing business, and will continue to be, given the law changes. My biggest, well, in addition to that, if in fact, growing indoors in the business park would make sense. I still have a lot of questions, and I know this, you, I was briefed for about five minutes by Ms. Zimmerman, and that, you know, this 200-page, whatever document was given by the state today, and you haven't had an opportunity to go through it, and I didn't expect you to go through it entirely. Sounds like some of the people in this room have already started to go through it, but I think we need to go through that as a city before we pass any laws, and find out what exactly is in that document, how that will affect the city. Again, getting back to the taxation, what we actually have control of, but I think it's definitely worth looking into. I'm glad that the, both, both sides of the item were here. It seemed like only one side was here in the last couple of meetings, but I'm glad to see that the opposing side was here as well, because it's good to hear from them as well, and I knew this wasn't a one-sided item and discussion. But I think we need to do something. I think, you know, the main thing is, we need to do it right, and I'm not sure if we can do that in a meeting like tonight, but I think I would just give direction to staff to go ahead and follow through on this.
Thank you. I made a whole list here, two questions that I had, and I know, I mean, I was totally against medical marijuana, but then when I listened to the last people that came, I see that there are a lot of needs, and there are people that do need that, and so there's valid issues there. So, but, and our poll showed, it showed that they, that people do want it, but it wasn't overwhelming. The poll, I didn't think was an overwhelming poll, so, but I just, my questions were like, as far as like, regulation, who's, who's going to regulate the business? Who's going to, you know, the cost of law enforcement or code enforcement calls for service? How would that money get paid for? That would be an extra charge for our city. You know, there's, I don't see a, you know, lack of funding unless we can do some kind of a special use tax or a business license possibly. I want, I'd like to know, that would be one of my questions. How are we going to, how are we going to permit the, like, these, the people that we, if it's only two, and I maybe save two, but may, how would, then are we going to judge who gets those permits, and how, how do we do that? You know, request for proposals and experience and whatever that is? That would be another question. Traffic flow and parking, I think that would be an important issue at the, at the dispensaries. I think that they would need to have that. My big concern is over youth, because I, I see right now that, it's easy to get a green card, and they've seen it online, and, you know, the youth, I worry about the youth of the city, you know, all the kids, and that's my big thing. I would like to know more about growers. I don't have a problem with maybe researching, researchers in the business park or growers, but I want to know more about that. What else? I think that's maybe covered, I was, I just think that covers a lot of my things that I wrote down, so I will, I see, oh, I see, I got lots of speakers left here. Okay, Councilwoman Aguilera.
Forgot to add one thing. I would like staff to look into possibly some sort of a sunset provision initially, in case this thing goes completely wrong, so that we can just reevaluate after a couple of years, and perhaps at that time, more, or less.
Deputy Mayor, I think I erased your name accidentally, so I think you're next.
Yeah, I know from a recent inquiry I made to the city manager, it was completely unrelated to marijuana, that we, we can't alter the business license fee for individual businesses, but maybe we could impose a fee for a special use permit? Is that, because there was, there was two, there was, there was the ability to recoup the cost of administering some kind of a permit, and then the, that was, but that was like legally confined to recovery of costs, and wouldn't allow us to make a profit or a net revenue. So what was that license fee? Because it's not a business license fee, correct?
Deputy Mayor, you're correct. Our business license is a fee, it's not a tax, and so it is based on the gross revenues of the business. Obviously, if you make a lot of revenues, then you would pay a higher rate, but we would not be able to establish a separate special fee or tax of that nature for this industry without, again, a Prop 218 vote of the people.
What about a special use permit?
If, if the city council desires to allow dispensaries in specific zones with a special use permit, there is a process that exists already through community development with a special, you see SUPs come before you. We are allowed to condition those in different ways, and you do recoup the costs of those, the cost for that, and...
So any justifiable cost for administration and reg- So any justifiable cost for administration and regulation, we could potentially recover in such a fee?
Correct. We would have to show the, the justification, the hours spent, the type of services. I do believe the cities of Lemongrove and La Mesa, who have recently enacted permitting of dispensaries, have similar processes that they put in place. So we'll speak with them as well as the city of San Diego and whatever comes through the regulations through SB 94 to make sure that we're, we're within the rights, especially working with the city attorney. But yes, if you can show, similar to other fees we've brought before the city council, if you can show the cost, its cost recovery for staff time, then you can charge that fee.
And my understanding is that in some jurisdictions, those fees can be in excess of $100,000, is that right?
I have seen some pretty high ones.
Well, I, I think the gentleman who's here tonight, who operates one of these dispensaries, asked us specifically to make sure that we regulate those who are not permitted. And as a fundamental issue of fairness, it certainly seems to me that if you do authorize X number and you ask those people to pay six-figure permit fees and to pay their taxes and to comply with whatever other burdensome regulatory hurdles that we impose upon them, then we do acquire a duty to them to, as my colleague said, swiftly and severely enforce the law. You know, my concern is, I think that our city attorney's office is doing a great job. And I think that they're at the forefront of swift and severe, at least they intend to be. And the reality is, I know I've had multiple conversations with Mr. Carpenter about the facility next to his house. And the reality is, it's not swift and it isn't so severe either, you know? And we, there are limited legal remedies available to us. And so, you know, and on behalf of all those who are listening to this debate, who have a commercial motive in the debate, I think it's a fair question to ask. If I spend all this money to comply and I'm lucky enough to be chosen and there are a dozen other competitors to me who are not following the rules, then what remedy is available to me? And I think it's, I think it's also very concerning, I can't remember who made the comment, I think it might have been the, the captain, about the idea of somebody who's not chosen to receive a permit or who's not renewed, that person obviously suffers a severe harm to their business, loses money, and that person then being a person of significant means and certainly, you know, has the remedy of going to court. And do we find ourselves by allowing some small number of these, do we find ourselves tied up in a lot of litigation that's quite costly? I think that's a real concern. I also think that giving any person at the City of Vista, whether it's staff or the council collectively, the ability to decide who does and who does not get the golden lottery ticket is an inherently corrupting thing. Whenever you give that kind of power to almost anyone, there is a very corrupting influence. And I, I hope, I pray that we have those individuals among us who are capable of not being corrupted. But when you give somebody the ability to, to put their finger on someone and say, "You will make millions of dollars and you will not," that is a real concern that we will have. And I could certainly see a, a time in the future where all of the great people who work for us now may have gone off into their next opportunities and some future person who is, you know, I mean, would we potentially find ourselves someday in a situation where we've got a, a problem like that? I don't know. I think it's, it's conceivable. That scares me. But we are, we are creating a regulated monopoly when we say that certain numbers of these stores can exist and, and all others cannot. You know, my general predisposition is that there's a lot we don't know. We're going to see a major change in the law on January 1st in the state of California. You know, I was kind of thinking, I don't want to do it, I don't want the deputies to arrest me because it might be illegal. But I was thinking, you know, it'd be cute if I could get on my phone and like order somebody up to bring some marijuana here and deliver it tonight. Because I'm guessing, I've never purchased marijuana in my life, but I'm, I'm guessing that I could probably get somebody to bring it to me right here and now. And I thought that'd be a good show and tell, but then I thought, no, the deputies would probably cuff me and take me away. So I didn't do it. But the point is, you know, look, my position on the use of marijuana has evolved. I, I have talked about this issue with many people that are people I respect deeply, you know, people I've done business with, you know, somebody who's, you know, my, my mortgage lender and, and other people I respect, who are successful people and who absolutely proved the rule, as the saying goes, and demonstrate that there are many productive members of society who use it recreationally. I'm certainly aware and moved by the compelling stories of people who suffer from ailments and find this to be a, you know, a cure for either their symptoms or their, or their illnesses. And I have no personal desire to engage in an effort to stop those people from accessing something which they feel is beneficial to them. However, we've been elected to this task to decide what is in the best interest of our community. And even when the polls indicate that there is a, and I would, I think fairly call it an uninformed desire, we, we've gone through, and if, if we just look on pages four and five, we have two full pages of regulations that we're proposing, the proponents made a 24-page proposal. And I, I think it's very fair to say that most of the folks that we asked their opinion did not spend the quantity of time that even those who have attended several meetings, let alone those of us on the council who have spent many, many hours talking to people about this issue, both members of the community and professionals who have a, a considered and weighted opinion on the subject. I believe that there are certain, there, there's a representational model, I've, I've maybe gone through this before, and there's a delegative model of elected representation. There are certain issues that I truly believe that people grasp so plainly that it's our job to do what their desire is and they'll probably oust us if we don't. And then I think that there are other issues where we've been elected, that, you know, there's a reason we don't just conduct polling every time we want to change the law. And that's because there's a lot of meetings, you know, I, my colleague and I were in one earlier tonight where we spent an hour understanding a new proposal for something unrelated to this. We spend a lot of time understanding the, the deep impact of, of our decisions so that we can feel really good and so that frankly, that our neighbors can feel really good, that we've studied and considered these issues at a depth far greater than they have a personal desire, interest, or ability to do. And I think this is one of those situations where we really have to ask ourselves, I know that each and every one of us wants dearly to leave a better Vista for our families. I know that 10 years from now, when probably none of us will still serve on this council or maybe 20 years from now, whenever it is, I know that we're going to want to drive through this community and point out to our family members and our friends and see for ourselves that we did something to leave a better community for those who came after us. And I truly remain unconvinced that a change to our current ordinance is going to produce a safer city for our, for our, our friends, families, and neighbors. And I'm, I'm unconvinced that it's going to produce a better quality of life for the people that call Vista home. I really, truly believe that. And I think there's, there's a lot of learning that we're going to do as a state and as a nation on this topic. And I really am not convinced that Vista needs to be at the forefront of the trailblazing on this issue. I'd really like to continue to learn from other communities. And that's where I'm at on it right now. So those are all the comments and thoughts I have at the moment.
And one thing we also didn't talk about was delivery. One of the things was delivery. We have, none of us have talked about that. Whether, well, we did? I must have, did I miss it?
We didn't.
No, I didn't think we did. So, you know, whether you want to pursue, I, I, there's a thing on TV, I don't remember what show it was on, that they had a thing about the delivery is such a huge thing, like the next California Gold Rush is the delivery of medical marijuana or whatever marijuana. So I don't know. It's some company and I, I didn't, I should have written down the name of it, but, so I don't know how everybody feels about that. So. Councilmember Green, I'll go to you again.
Thank you so much. And it's really good to hear everybody's perspective on this because I have smart colleagues, so I like to hear what you guys have to say. My main concern with the number of dispensaries is kind of based off of information that I received from just speaking with people in the medical marijuana industry, and I'm assuming you guys have talked to those people as well. There is roughly, according to the medical marijuana people, 40,000 prescriptions being serviced within our city. And there's over 2,000 Vista residents that have medical marijuana prescriptions. So it's like 42,000 people getting serviced by medical marijuana dispensaries. And I don't know that two dispensaries can handle that overwhelming number of prescriptions. So my question does go to delivery, and I think it'd be one for the assistant city manager, is it looks like from the ordinance right here that there's really no limitation to the amount of delivery drivers that the approved applicants can have. And it appears that they're going to have to have, you know, permits and licenses and, you know, insurance and, and all of that good stuff. But it looks like even though we may only go with two or whatever number staff comes back with, the delivery aspect of it isn't really that limited as long as they abide by the RFQs per se on this document. Is that correct?
Above, primarily, that is correct. The, with, the way delivery works, you would have to meet a number of
Of course.
Specific regulations, if the city council had any they wanted to remove or add, this would be the time to let us know so that we can bring it back. But given that a delivery has a permit to operate a dispensary at fixed location somewhere else, there's no limit on the number of delivery drivers or people so long as they meet all of the other criteria.
So hypothetically, that
Hypothetically.
Two dispensaries in our deal could employ 50 weed delivery guys per se.
That all would need to do all of these things.
If they jump through all, and, and don't get me, I, I personally have looked at your restrictions for drivers and I like them. There's none that I want to take away or add. I like that they're stringent. I like that they're over the top. I drive on those streets. I have two daughters who drive on these streets. So I'm totally okay with it. I just want to, you know.
There isn't a cap.
There isn't a cap. So I mean, when it comes to access and safe, reliable, that may be able to be accomplished with a small number because of the delivery stipulation. Possibly, we don't know.
Right.
But thanks.
But how many, how much traffic is it going to cause for people picking up and delivering at, at a business?
I think it would cut down on the traffic at the location if they hired more delivery people. But, you know, once again, that's something that we'll find out.
Bring us, I actually have more information on that, I don't think I, oh, okay, I get it. So, Councilmember Aguilera.
I was just going to say that I think I support delivery. So I think Mr. Green made a good point that if there's no cap on the number of delivery people, then the two places would be able to handle it.
Well, they better have a drive-through or something.
Maybe they could all work together.
Okay, is it, so do you have enough direction from all of us? How about, did you have anything?
Yes, thank you.
Anybody want to add anything? Okay, so, in that case, that, we don't need a motion or anything, do we? Do we need? No, don't need a motion.
Ms. Zimmerman, what direction is it that you've received?
I, I believe I have the consensus of the council majority to move forward with regulations to permit two dispensaries in the city of Vista, based on the regulations that were provided in the agenda report. And then in addition, any of the items that were requested from the dais that are above those regulations. We will do, we're doing a significant amount of research to make sure that we are not out of compliance with upcoming state laws. We will also be doing research to determine what would be appropriate and applicable in terms of testing and cultivation in the, you, you mentioned the business park, we would term it as the industrial zone of the city and what types of requirements that may bring up. And then addressing how the fees that could be established based on what is allowed by, for a city to do, which basically is cost recovery and our business license fee. And then I will also look at bringing back information on what type of special use tax could potentially be implemented. That would have to be at an election, though, so that's not something that would be a part of municipal zoning code changes. All of this would also need to go through the zoning process, which means planning commission and council.
I have another question.
I might add that the selection process will also be reviewed as part of that, as you discussed.
My other question was, what will our, what will our answer be on the enforcement issue? When you, when you bring this back, if you could prepare a presentation, if the staff could collectively work on that, to talk about what our enforcement stance is going to be, how it might change? And also, what would our legal liabilities be? What might our exposure be to litigation? What obligations, if any, would we have that would be credible? What exposure would we have to even frivolous lawsuits? And what might that do to us? What has the experience have been of other municipalities and jurisdictions with regard to that? And then where do we stand? What's the proposal with regard to those who have conducted business in violation of the law and whether they would be eligible for those permits? And also, I'm also curious to know about those who have not collected the sales tax, which is required. And what are we doing? This is a totally separate issue, but it's, it's directly related. What are we doing in terms of enforcement there? What are, is the, are we asking for enforcement from BOE? The city's being cheated of revenues and we should pursue like we would any business that cheats at taxes? I know everybody in this room hates tax cheats. So I know we'll all be of a like mind that we all want people to pay all their taxes because there's lots of good things that we do with tax dollars, so.
Well, because the sales and use tax is administered by the state, the state would be the one to audit and enforce that. If it was a, a special use tax or fee that wasn't being paid, we do audit our business license fees, fees that are specific to the city such as TOT, we can audit those. But if there's a business that's not paying its sales tax, we can provide information, if we're aware of them, to the state. But I don't believe the city enforces those or audits those.
Have we or can we make a formal request in writing to the Board of Equalization and any other authorities charged with enforcing collection of tax revenue and ask them to enforce the law on that subject?
Sure.
I might also Buy all information relevant to them, to their system and their duties.
I didn't mean to interrupt. I wanted to also add that Councilman Green discussed a security deposit, and so that's something we'll explore as well.
Well, I don't know that we heard from each of us individually, but I'll take silence in some cases to mean consent. So I'm interested to see what proposal you come back with, though I'm not certain at this moment that I'm going to be supportive of it. Thank you.
And I just have one more question on the, on the delivery. So can each delivery vehicle only have the legal amount of that in, in the, in the car at one time? They have to only, can they have like several orders or can they only have one small order, which is a legal amount, and then have to live with that and come back and get another one?
The current state law only allows for eight ounces to be transported if something changes. But the, the condition that was recommended in the agenda report related to the state laws that existed when I wrote this, which was eight ounces.
Okay, so they'd have to, so they can't buy in bulk. They have to buy whatever, eight ounces.
Is that 64 servings?
Is that right? Eight ounces is 64 servings?
Is that right? Eight ounces is sixty-four servings?
I'm guessing that eight ounces is multiple deliveries, multiple locations.
Oh, okay, okay.
But you can't have more in your vehicle than that.
Oh my, okay. I'll wait till you guys come back with all the information for us. That will be interesting. So, I guess with that, is that all we need? Nope? No, he said, no, he said, never mind. Okay, I guess we're good. Okay, so with that, we got it. We have to finish our meeting, guys, down there. So with that, we're done with that subject. And so we're gonna move on to our oral communications, and we have one speaker for oral communication? No, we have three. If they all staged through this exciting meeting here. Okay, so first, as Joe, hold on, I gotta get my glasses on. Joe Sassi, is it? Followed by Rebecca Medea, followed by Mary Jo Poole.
Thanks, City Council, for being receptive to taking my complaint. I don't understand why this transition took place, but I'll explain in detail, not detail, but... You had the Supreme Court of the state of California in favor of these lights that used to take pictures. In fact, I had my picture taken. I liked that picture. I would have replaced that picture on my driver's license. It was so good. At any rate, I figure that under the same circumstances, I would make the same decision. If you're on Civic Center Drive trying to turn left on Santa Fe, then you've got a problem if the first and second car of a four-card car lineup, I was number four, to make a left turn. Well, we all had our left turn blinkers on. Beautiful, law-abiding citizens. And then I went to make my left-hand turn, and behold, I was blocked. So I had to pose, because the city, somewhere along the way, allowed that taco shop to have a drive-through that comes parallel to Civic Center, or to Santa Fe. And they also have an entryway that's less than two-car lengths to make a right turn into that facility. So what do you do, Coach? I'm sure you're clairvoyant. You would have anticipated that. Well, I'm not clairvoyant, and I got a ticket. I didn't mind that ticket, because I had no recourse, except that I found out, for the most part, that 50% of the people ignored the letters since they didn't get them registered or certified. There was no accountability for who the criminal was and who the criminal wasn't, so. When the Supreme Court said that those apparatuses are, have the presumption of authenticity, man, I thought, that's Shakespeare and poetry. And I never did like Shakespeare when I was in high school. I liked it less when I got the ticket. But I paid it. Now, I was privileged to commit another criminal act on the 15th of June. But I can't, I can't fault the officer, but I, I gotta preface this by saying, what I did depends on what is is. Now, it worked for the guy that said that, but I'm gonna see if it's gonna work for me. I don't think it will. Some people are above the law. Some people comply.
You need to, you need to get to your point, because your three minutes are up. So, so kinda get to your point. No, no, just give us your bottom line.
Bottom line is, I sat in the parking lot for 20 minutes while my wife was home by herself. When I got home, the first thing she said to me, "Where were you?" I thought I was abandoned. Now, I'll tell you what, I won't remember the ticket. I won't remember the cost of that ticket, because I couldn't care less about that. I'll remember and find out who voted for this entrapment scheme. And I'll vote against that person. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Rebecca?
Hi, I'm Rebecca Medici. I'm here to discuss community choice energy. I don't really know, I know a little bit about it. I believe the next speaker knows just a little bit more than I do. But I understand that you had a closed-door session and kind of either decided to table it or not, to put it out there. And I think I've been speaking a lot to a lot of my neighbors, and I know a lot of people are interested in it. I know SDG and E are very expensive, and nobody likes them. And I think we need the competition. And in a lot of places, like Lancaster, for instance, they've made a lot of money off of community choice energy. I think it would be very popular. You guys could be heroes if you enacted it. So I think you should at least put it out there for the public to consider it. Thank you.
Thank you. Mary Jo Poole.
Yes, hello, and thanks once again for having everybody come talk. It's been an informative evening. So I came here to talk about community choice energy, or community choice aggregate. In 2010, Marin County started community choice energy. Napa County with five cities. In Sonoma County in 2014. City of Lancaster in 2015. City of San Francisco. Mendocino County, San Mateo County, and 20 cities. And soon, Solana Beach, City of San Jose, and Los Angeles County will all have community choice energy. Community choice energy, right at this moment in time, has contributed over $1 billion in the construction of Sea California Renewables. It has created 2,800-plus California jobs that have resulted in 1.2 million union labor hours. I, you know, this is a really important issue. It is the future. It's the future of our city. It's the future of our country, and actually globally, right? So I'm kind of disappointed, not kind of, I am disappointed that the city council has said no to be the part of a feasible feasibility study in this region on clean choice energy without any, any type of public involvement or discussion. And I really hope that you will revisit that decision, because this is the best thing that we could do for our city and our community residents at this time. We need the jobs, and we have the solar energy. And there's, you know, the whole region is kind of behind this, so. So thank you very much. Have a nice evening.
Thank you. Okay, that's the end of our speakers. And so with that, we will go to any remarks. I'll start down here with Councilmember Green. Oh. Deputy Mayor.
Mr. Johnson, was there a meeting here at the city that I wasn't invited to about this community choice energy?
No, there was not a meeting held by the city. There was a meeting at the library, but it was not a city meeting.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
So we didn't have a meeting where we decided one way or another on this?
That is correct.
Okay, because that's the first I've heard of that.
Okay, so then I'll go to Councilmember Green.
Sorry, mic issues tonight, man. Anyway, thank you guys all for staying the entire time tonight. I appreciate you guys coming out. Know that your voice does matter. The things that you tell us, we really take into consideration before we make a decision. So, thank you guys all for coming up. Thanks for being a part of the community. Have a great night.
Deputy Mayor? Ditto, okay. Councilor Aguilera.
I guess ditto, but I would also like to wish everybody a safe July 4th weekend. I know the mayor probably has information on all the activities here in the city. But I just wanna wish you, again, all the safe, happy July 4th. Thank you.
Okay, yes, I do have this. And the city's Independence Celebration takes place on Tuesday, July 4th, at the Moonlight Amphitheater in Bringle Terrace Park. We always have the greatest fireworks, so I enjoy those. And on July 4th is Appreciation Day at The Wave. For military fire and law enforcement, active or retired, get free admission with an ID. The Wave Water Park information is online at thewavewaterpark.com. And the next free movies in the park is Saturday, July 15th, at Bringle Terrace Park. There's gonna be a summer fest, a summer fun fest. It takes place at 5:30, and the movie is, is it Moana? Moana? Begins at 8, I don't know that movie, I guess. The movie Moana begins at 8:00 PM. And so there's more information on that. Go online at cityofvista.com. And there are no city council meetings in July. We are dark in July, and so I hope everyone enjoys their summer. And the next city council meeting will be scheduled for Tuesday, August 8th. So we will see you all in August. And so, city manager, do you have some?
Thank you, Mayor. I have a couple. The Vista Library and City Hall are closed on July 4th. And so, in observance of Independence Day, which you stated. And so residential trash collection will be delayed one day that week. So that's next week. We also have designated cool zones that are free air-conditioned spaces. And the two zones that we have are the Vista Library and the Gloria McClellan Adult Activity Center. So if you're interested in more information on the cool zones, you can go to thecityofvista.com. It's got tips, and it's got hours of operation. And I did wanna mention that for the 4th of July, we'll be having our fireworks again, our annual fireworks at Bringle Terrace Park. The park opens at 7:00 AM to the public. The Moonlight Amphitheater, if you're interested in going to the Moonlight, you can sign up for dinners if there's still seats available. But also, the amphitheater is available for $5 per person. We will have the Mardells on hand, which will be playing music. We're gonna have a celebration of our military heroes. And then the fireworks show and the Mardells will play afterwards. Parking is $15 for cars. And so the park opens again at 7:00 AM, and the amphitheater opens at 5:00 PM. Thank you.
Okay, so with, oh, city attorney.
Ditto.
Okay, ditto, okay. Well, city clerk, are you a ditto too? Okay, with that, we are adjourned.